Me into order at your leisure. Hey, thank you. It is six oh two. Welcome to the town of Bloomfield Finance Subcommittee Meeting. Calling this meeting to order. I'm looking online for any counselors. In the room, we have Counselor Mike Oliver, we have Mayor Tony Harrington and myself. And just waiting to see if anybody else is going to join. We'll give them one more minute before we get started. Okay, well. We'll move on at six oh four. Whoever joins, joins. Thank you all for joining. Once again, calling the meeting to order. Role call has been done. We'll start with old business discussion and status update regarding the fiscal year 2024 and 2025 audits.
Yes.
Please, thank you Director Hill. Thank you.
Am I, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We hear you.
You see me? I can't see you.
Oh, um, we're in conference room two. I believe the other groups can see us.
That's not Denise Robida?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm really Mike Goman tonight and Mike is Justin, so.
Thank you. I apologize. Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor. The FY twenty four audit is still ongoing. We've made significant progress since I last reported, having submitted twenty seven of the then remaining twenty four items to our external auditor, CLA. Of the thirteen items remaining, the most significant is the trial balance that feeds into several other items. We're working to complete that. That will be done and submitted next week, which will then feed into five other things that get submitted. Two of the remaining thing, two of the thirteen remaining things are statistical tables and the management discussion and analysis, which both of those are the last things that we submit. So, since I last reported, we've made very good progress. We're, we're very close to having everything to CLA so that their work can begin in earnest after that. We're in close communication with them because you may or may not know and appreciate that all one hundred and sixty nine local governments across Connecticut are in the midst of an audit right now. Most are working on fiscal year two thousand twenty five, but some like us are still working to complete fiscal year twenty four. And I believe I understand correctly that there are a small number that are still working on their either fiscal twenty three audit or their fiscal twenty two audit. And we continue to work closely with CLA to complete our twenty four audit as soon as possible with our target continuing to be the end of next month, September thirtieth. But given that the entire state's in audit now, I do have some concerns that that may slide a little bit just based on the availability of staff at CLA. But if you know Vanessa and Michael and the team at CLA, they are very active across Connecticut and do a very good job of scheduling their resources to meet their clients' needs. And I expect that they will continue to do the same for the town of Bloomfield. As you will see in a few minutes in the fiscal year twenty five, two thousand twenty five financial report, I've made a conservative assumption regarding the amount to be added to our unassigned fund balance from fiscal twenty four operations. There continues to be movement in our fiscal twenty four financials. As work completed during fiscal twenty four required research and correction. This conservative approach to year-end operation, operating performance should provide confidence that the numbers presented can be met or exceeded. We will know definitively in the coming weeks when the FY twenty four audit is completed. I'll pause there before I move on to two thousand twenty five's audit to, in case any committee members have questions.
Um, I did, but you answered a couple of them as far as your projection on getting the remaining five items of the thirteen over and then the others and pretty much the five versus the thirteen. I think it's answered regardless. You're shooting for September thirtieth to have everything to CLA for them to start doing what they need to do. And I believe from the last inquiry that there may be about twenty towns and cities that were in the same position that we are. So if we could ensure to work with CLA so that we don't get pushed back, to your point of being in the midst of what is going to be a state audit, either ongoing or starting, particularly because they know we've been in the midst of pulling this together and feeding them information. Hopefully, they will allocate those resources to keep us going so we can complete this. And at the same time, I know that you guys are working on this year's financials as well so that we can be as close to the December thirty first date on the current audit year. So, um, I guess I'd like to ask, and then I'm sure there'll be other questions. How is that looking while you're trying to reconcile twenty four? What is twenty five looking like?
So before I move on to twenty five, I will respond, of course, but just a slight correction to your twenty four. We're working to have everything to CLA next week and then have it completed by the end of September.
But, okay, if I didn't say it that way, that's what I meant. Thank you. But thank you for clarifying in case it wasn't clear for anybody.
And as I've, as I've reported to committee previously, as we've been working on twenty four and, you know, it's extremely valuable for current staff to have all the insights that we've gained. After our, the last committee meeting, we did bring in some temporary help that was, was and continues to be helpful. As you know, I, you know, I, a budget modification ask in fiscal twenty six for a senior accountant, which is what the temporary staff that we've brought in, who they are and what their experience is. So that's, that's been value and helping accelerate through these last few weeks. But as we've been working to complete twenty four, we've been, as I phrase it, bringing along twenty five with us. You know, we're, we're doing, have done and continue to do a significant amount of research into how the town has previously managed its finances and as we, one, understand it, two, adjust or correct as necessary. We're also, we're doing that for twenty four, but we're also looking at twenty five to correct or adjust anything in twenty five that we see in twenty four, which I believe is going to help us compress our audit schedule for fiscal twenty five. You know, the normal cycle is that fiscal year ends June thirtieth. State statute requires by December thirty first to file the audit. So that's a six-month period. We pre-close before June thirtieth and then after June thirtieth during July, we typically close the, the fiscal year out, making any adjustments that need to be made in that, what we call the thirteenth period, twelve months and then the thirteenth period for adjustments. So where we are now, it is the end of August and we would have closed twenty five last month, which, which is not technically closed, but it's close to being closed. Purchase orders and everything for fiscal twenty five was much more orderly than fiscal twenty four. But we're already two months into the fiscal twenty five audit cycle. So, given our work in twenty four, bringing twenty five along, the projection for completing the twenty four audit. And then, you know, on, once we get everything to CLA next week, we'll still have a couple of items and answering questions that they have for twenty four. The couple of items are the management discussion and analysis that I mentioned previously and the statistical tables. But as we wrap those up after submitting everything to CLA next week, we will begin working on twenty five's audit. Audit prep to provide, prepare to provide those deliverables to CLA so that they can then begin our fiscal twenty five audit work. Now, there is some separation between those two. You know, while we have the ability to do things relative to the fiscal two thousand twenty five audit, once we get everything submitted to CLA next week, their audit standards, I believe it's their audit standards, won't allow them to, to be crossing fiscal years, meaning working on twenty five's audit and twenty, twenty four's audit at the same time. Said slightly differently and maybe in something closer to English, they've got a, CLA has to finish the twenty four audit before they open up twenty five for us. But when they open up twenty five for us, once the twenty four audit is done, we will immediately begin populating what I expect will be the same ninety nine deliverables that we had for fiscal twenty four. All of that is to suggest that my current projection or hope is that we'll be able to file the fiscal year two thousand twenty five audit by the end of February. Right now, that's two months beyond the statutory deadline. We know that the state OPM allows us six extensions, six months of extensions through the end of June. So if we're able to hit February and if not March, for the first time, we will be, for the first time in four years, the town will be within the allowable extension period. With that being an intermediate step for the fiscal twenty six audit, looking way, way down the road with lots of work to happen between now and then, being on time by, filed with the state by December thirty first, two thousand and twenty six.
Right. And thank you for mentioning that. We have been a few years running, being behind on the audit, but has not had a negative impact on our bond rating. But it does bear repeating. So the public understands that we do have a bit of a trend. And also it bears repeating that since you and your team have come on, you've been able to significantly identify gaps and have been able to course correct. So thank you for explaining what that looks like for the public. I do believe that Council McClary is on there. He may have some additional questions, but I did want to say thank you for reiterating that so that the public understands. And I will ask one more question. What do you think? Yes, we have up to six months with six extensions. Being a little behind or after that timeframe now, what do you believe that looks like or what have you heard it possibly look like as an impact to our upcoming bond rating?
You know, I, I, I don't expect there to be any negative impact to our bond rating that doesn't already exist. You know, our financial performance is solid, right? And while twenty four's audit is still pending, we are tracking a surplus. I'll speak a little bit more to that and the impact, the projected estimated impact on our fund balance when I present later on, on the June twenty twenty five financial report. The twenty four performance would adds to, we're currently projecting a conservative, I think it's just over a million and a half dollars, being added to our unassigned fund balance from fiscal two thousand twenty four operations. Similarly, in, from fiscal two thousand twenty five, another surplus. So while, you know, the, the town's audits have been filed late for four years running, each of those years we've demonstrated, I believe each, I haven't looked back at twenty one and twenty two, but I, I believe the trend from twenty three, twenty four and twenty five holds that we appropriate the fund balance to help mitigate mill rate increases. And then the financial performance is that we don't actually need that appropriated fund balance to supplement our revenues for the respective fiscal years. That is good news. It may be somewhat conservative budgeting, but, but that is a positive thing. It is much better to have excess or surplus revenue, net revenues from operations as opposed to being in a deficit position where our revenues are not meeting our expenditures, even with the use of the appropriated fund balance. So I, I think the rating agencies, while they do frown upon the delays in filing our financial statements, our financial performance, our government, governance, our management, our operation, the, the town of Bloomfield is, is in a good position but for the delay in filing the audits. But the financial performance that's included in those audits is positive. And that trend continues with the unaudited information presented previously and this evening.
Okay, thank you. And my apologies, Council McClary. I think you popped in just a couple of minutes after we started. So at this point, Council McClary, I'm sure you have some questions. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just two questions. Question number one, Darryl. It's my understanding that we get our rating from S and P, but Moody's and Cole and all the other agencies, do you put us on a positive watch list or not? There's been some misconceptions out there that Moody's has put us on the negative outlook. Can you talk about that as it relates to our audit? So I just want you to talk a little bit about it.
Sure. It's, it's not really relative to the audit. It's relative to the rating. The audit is what they are interested in because they, they come every year and that's what they use. They spread our financials to see how we're performing, how we're performing compared to our peers so that they can formulate their rating opinion. You know, and a rating is an opinion, right? And we do the best that we can to influence that opinion. You know, Moody's versus S and P, we have ratings with both S and P and Moody's. I understand that the Moody's rating is a bit of a legacy issue because the last issue, bond issue that Moody's rated was a number of years ago, maybe even more than a decade ago. And that was a conscious decision that the town made in the past to not keep Moody's and S and P. And I'm not even sure if it was both at the time, but now it is Standard and Poor's Ratings Group, that is our primary rating agency, who rated our bonds issued this January, last January, and I believe in recent years. So I say it that way to hopefully provide some perspective that, well, one, there's two agencies, Moody's and Standard and Poor's. They, they act differently and I'm not going to speak, you know, in a public setting too much about how their inner workings are. But Moody's has asked for our financials and they've asked for draft information to be provided to them. That may be the notice that you're referring to from late June. In more recent communication with Moody's, we've got a couple of weeks to provide them with those draft audited numbers and notes, and we will be able to hit that mark largely in part because we'll have everything submitted to CLA next week. Now, Standard and Poor's, while we've had communications with them and they are our primary rating agency, the double A plus, they've asked for our financials. We've told them our schedule and they've said, thank you. When the audit's done, provide it to them so that they can do their work. So, you know, I, I understand folks, you know, it's, it's a bit of a double-edged sword for me. I've been doing this for a long time and, you know, sometimes the rating agencies are used as not a good reason to do something or a good reason to do something. Rating agencies provide a valuable resource to investors, right? It's, it's, that's who they are reporting for and to. It's so that investors have a consistent presentation of information of how, in our case, local governments' operations are viewed. That coupled with, you know, GAAP, GASB, all of the various accounting standards creates the framework that we all have to comply with. And I, I think that Moody's and primarily S and P, they understand where the town is. It is not positive, and I think this is, at least from my opinion, probably the only thing that's not positive is that we've been late for four years running. But with what the town has experienced relative to the audit in the past, over the past four years and in the finance department and the town manager's office over the past five to ten years, I, I think that the town is, is doing well to be in the position that it's in to not have, you know, a financial crisis, right? You know, it's state mandated revaluation and property values increasing. That's a market dynamic that the, the town council, the town administration doesn't have control over, right? The markets do what the markets do, including the real estate market. So, you know, from that bird's eye view, looking down at Bloomfield with the rating agency lens on, we, we've got some things that are concerning, you know, long-term liabilities, pension liabilities, unfunded OPEB liabilities, all those good things that everyone has that doesn't have a, a, a revenue dynamic where, you know, there's not too many of them across the country, but there are places in Connecticut and across the country that, you know, they pay cash for everything, right? They're, they're, they're growing so well, their property values are going up, the construction of residential and commercials going up and generating so much revenue for them that they don't even have to borrow for schools. They pay cash for a hundred million dollar schools, right? We don't have that reality. But how we're managing our finances and including our capital program, you know, we've got some room for improvement, but I'm a firm believer in the very simple concept of continuous improvement. And while we are going to work very intentionally and deliberately in the coming weeks, months and year plus to get the town's finances back on track with regard to filing our audit compliant with the statutory deadline, there's, there's a lot of other work that, that, that's going on that is likely to never be seen, but to add value to the town's operations, its residents and businesses.
Thank you. Next question is, can you talk about the letter that we received from the state? Is it MARB or can you tell me the difference between that and are we at, at risk of being?
Yeah, let's, 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 let's first correct. It is not MARB.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to.
Municipal Accountability Review Board is the last step before state takeover. And there are some that may even suggest that MARB is a de facto state takeover, right? Hartford with its threats for bankruptcy under Mayor Bronin, others across the state that are in and have come out of MARB. That is not the, the correspondence that the town of Bloomfield received. We received a correspondence from OPM's Municipal Finance Advisory Committee. And the Municipal Finance Advisory Committee, the correspondence received is questioning the status of our audit. And that is, I believe, a good word would be perfunctory, only because we crossed over June thirtieth into July. So beyond the six months of allowable extensions, that letter automatically gets generated to any, any town or city across the state that hasn't filed their audit with OPM. That letter requires a response. We provided that response, including where we are in the audit process and what our projected completion date is. And we will continue to provide information to MFAK, Municipal Finance Advisory Committee next week, once all of our submissions are provided to CLA. We'll let them know that. I'll be able to generate, still unaudited, but from our perspective, near final financial performance numbers that I expect will provide the Municipal Finance Advisory Committee with maybe not comfort, but some insights as to where we are in that ultimately, you know, know this, whether it's the rating agencies or the Municipal Finance Advisory Committee or any other interested party, their concern is whether or not there's a problem that our financials being late is hiding or not disclosing. And that is not the case, right? We've just had, you know, staffing, process, procedure, you know, issues that have snowballed over the years that we're, we're now working through and addressing.
Question, in any of the last four years that the town has been late, has the state sent that letter or this is just for this year?
Um, I, I, I haven't stopped working on the two thousand twenty four audit to look for it. But believe that with the, the audit filing for, and don't quote me on the dates. I know all three of them by month, but I may juggle, right? Twenty three's audit was filed with the state, I believe, on July fifth. The twenty two audit was filed in October and the twenty one audit was filed in August. As I reported at the, as I reported at the last meeting, both the August and the October filings would suggest that MFAK sent the same letter the first or second week of July to the town. I, I don't, I don't have any value for me to take the time to go and look and see if that happened. If it didn't happen, I'd have a question about why it didn't happen. But to me, I believe it happened just because it is something that OPM and the Municipal Finance Advisory Committee does. When you cross over that June thirtieth threshold beyond the six months of allowable extensions and you haven't filed your audit, you receive that letter. So with our audits being filed two of the past three years in August and October, I believe that letter did come to the town.
Yeah, and I, and I reviewed their, their minutes from their last meeting, that committee, and CLA was present, Vanessa was present because they represent a number of towns that are late in their audit. And I think Vanessa articulated why some of those towns were late. And the committee asked for a few of them to, you know, come into the committee to articulate it. It seemed like it was standard review of municipal finances, as you explained. So, uh, thank you for letting that be put on the record for the residents that, you know, yeah, although our audit is late, we're working to do it. It was a snowfall effect. We're working to correct it. It has been a snowfall effect. Although I had some lofty goals of trying to get us back on track. Not quite because, you know, the staffing issues and the turnover, finance directors and the town manager, things just get left out. You were left with almost a year worth of unreconciled bank records. And so I appreciate how you and your team has, you know, caught up and staff and are beginning to staff up and look for technology to kind of help ease the process. Uh, that's all my questions related to this.
Sure. Thank you. And later on, when I present the June twenty five and July twenty five financial reports, I'll, I'll speak more about munis and the use, and you'll actually see in the report some of the benefits of the increased usage of munis. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, Deputy Mayor and Committee.
Quick question. One, I'm sorry. Well, you said that. Quick question. Do we publish our OS documents online, our official statements from the rating agencies online?
They're publicly available, yes.
On our website?
On our website? I don't believe so.
Yeah, we can put that to our website so that, uh, the residents of Bloomfield can, like on the finance page, can see that report and how great some of the responses that we're doing from cybersecurity to our local economy, et cetera, this town's finances. You know, that is a statement that they look, as you said, they dive deep into our finances, they dive deep into our practices, management practices. And if anything was concerning to them at our last reading in January, they would have put it in that official statement to, to investors and to the community. And so if we can just put that up there so that people know that our credit rating remains strong to this day, I think that would be important. Don't mean to take you away from the audit, but just that we can do that, I think that would be helpful to the public. So then they know that we are strong. I've got a lot of work to do, but our finances and our, our rating is very, very, very strong.
Thank you, Committee.
Thank you. I defer to you, Council McClary, Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to ask the committee if there's no objections because I know Attorney Moore has some things to do this evening and have a conflict. Yeah, I was, if there's no objections, can we move the business, the tax abatement, and I don't know, Attorney Moore, if that's in, in order because we're moving new business to old business up or skipping down to it? If we could just jump to the tax abatement policy. If there's no objections, Attorney Moore, are we allowed to do that? If there's no objections, Attorney Moore, are we allowed to do that?
I, I, do you have to suspend the rules? I think you might have to suspend the rules.
Okay, is there a motion to suspend the committee rules? Moved and seconded, all those in favors? I, motion passed, uh, rules to suspend it, so I'm now access to jump down to, uh, the discussion of possible action regarding the tax abatement policy. Attorney Moore, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Um, so I don't know if everyone has had a chance to read the current tax abatement policy and the addendum, um, that was recently passed. But when I'm reading it, I have a few concerns. With the original policy that was written and published in twenty seventeen, my main concern is actually not substance necessarily, but clarity. Um, so the way that this is written, it has come up in the past, uh, recently, in fact, that the policy sets out a guideline, and there seems to be confusion as to whether or not the guideline is just a suggestion. Or whether the council is supposed to follow that guideline to the letter. Um, the fact that there is confusion on that concerns me. And I also noticed that if it is a guideline, it doesn't set out what is possible under the maximum terms of the statute. So based on this policy alone, it doesn't provide a lot of information that the council could use, um, to kind of fully craft terms for these agreements. I also noticed that the town council, under the way the policy is written, the town council seems to be able to set a public hearing or not as it chooses. Um, I would advise against that. I think that that opens up the council to accusations of favoritism. But the way that this is written, it allows for a public hearing, but it does not require one. So that, that concerns me about the main policy itself. What I am more concerned about, however, is the addendum that was passed that sets out a specific schedule that contradicts what is permitted under the state statute. So that, the actual policy itself does include the fact that the state statute only allows the assessment to be fixed on the improvements that are a direct result of the, um, development and investments. But the addendum itself refers to the total amount of property taxes due. And that has in two occasions recently led to a draft agreement that violates state statute. And this was only discovered after months and months and months of internal discussions and coming to an agreement. Uh, when the agreement was sent to legal, that's when it was discovered. Um, the addendum is not published on the town website. So that, that there is my main concern. I, I think what would be advisable is for the committee to recommend to town council to review and revise this policy so that it not only complies with state law, but it clarifies the process procedure and guidelines that the town council should use. That was a lot, so please feel free to ask questions.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the committee?
Uh, I just, this is Sunday. I just wanna say thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, we've had other incidents where we've had to adjust language based on ordinances that didn't match charter and things that nature. So I think it's imperative that we have consistency across the board. That our policy matches our charter or isn't consistent, um, guidelines with the state so that everything matches up across the board. I do thank you for that review, and I think, um, I agree with you. We do need to ensure that everything is consistent. So I would certainly support, um, yourself and the committee in making that recommendation.
The other questions for members of the committee? Attorney Moore, do you have a draft of what you're recommending that we update the policy to?
I do. Um, some of it is tentative and will have to be discussed, but I, I do have a draft.
So how does that, I, I know we are not on that item, but how does that, uh, address or affect the proposal before us tonight?
So because the proposal before you tonight is both in compliance with the policy as it is and state law. Um, and we did have to redraft it to align it with state law. Um, but it can go forward under the current policy because it is not being, um, agreed to under the addendum.
Okay. So that's like, so you're saying that you have a po- problem with the addendum, not the entire policy? Or did I hear earlier you had a problem with the policy? Some issues with the policy around transparency of or requirement of, uh, public hearing and then the addendum violates the state statute?
Correct. So the addendum is the main problem because that contradicts state statute. The, the main policy itself, I do have some issues with, but they are not, um, substantive issues that would impact this particular agreement.
What's the will and pleasure of the committee?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Any questions from staff on the line, Gorman New York?
I do have one follow-up question.
Yeah.
Um, I assume that, that when this, um, disagreement was being discussed, that the committee went through kind of line by line the policy.
What policy are you referring to? Are you referring to the Arbeola tax abatement?
I'm referring to the Arbeola tax abatement. Um, has, has that been compared to every requirement in the current policy?
Did I do an, a, 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 an assessment or did the staff or Gorman New York do an assessment of it?
Anyone. I just wanna make sure that that was done before I definitively say that it agrees with the policy, because it agrees with the policy from the perspective that I was concerned about. But I don't know whether or not, you know, a line by line assessment was done to ensure compliance with the, you know, main requirements of the policy.
I don't wanna speak to, for the committee, but we were hope that the staff and legal folks would do that. Um, I know I did read the policy. I knew their first abatement, uh, request violated the policy. Um, because our policy set up to seven years, they were asking for ten years. Um, and that's when Gorman New York said, oh, that's just the recommendation, that's not, you know, that's not set in stone. So I did do a review of the policy compared to the ten-year, uh, proposal. Um, I don't know what the proposal that they're bringing forth tonight is. I haven't seen it. Um, I'm just going based off of some numbers that were presented to me, um, in a meeting that I have with finance and the town manager and others, Gorman New York. But there was no final proposal presented to me for me to do that analysis.
Okay, understood.
I don't know, I don't know if other members of the committee, um, wanna chime in.
I know that, um, there were two, uh, ideas presented, and that was gonna be discussed, uh, this evening. One was, was relative to a seven-year, uh, seventeen affordable houses or units, and the other being a ten-year, uh, twenty affordable units.
Yeah, but I think her question, um, uh, Mr. Mayor is that, um, did you read the policy and do an analysis to make sure that those two proposals, if one or the other was in line with the policy? Right, Ashley, is that your question?
That is my question, yes.
Yeah, not what the proposals are, but what did, does those two proposals, uh, meet the standard of what the policy say we can do?
Think, I think the answer, if I may, I'll try here. Uh, I, I think the answer, uh, is that, uh, we, Gorman New York, along with staff, and the developer believe that what's been submitted is consistent with, uh, the policy. But between this meeting tonight and council, like a council meeting, assuming that's where it goes. You know, my suggestion would be that the, uh, legal counsel for the town be asked to just do that line by line review. And make sure prior to a council vote, make sure that that is consistent. At times, I think, I think what I heard Ashley say is that the, 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 what's been submitted now is consistent with state law.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, um, I guess the, the statement that maybe John Coleman, you wanna weigh in, or Mayor, you wanna weigh in on it, but I, I would guess that the council's, uh, preference would be that, that, uh, the town, the city, town council's preference would be that legal council uh, be prepared to opine on that at the council meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's the recommendation I made. That's what I made tonight. That's what I just said.
Right.
Uh, question, are you talking about the ten-year proposal submission or the one going down to seven years? Because the seven-year proposal was just me asking for them to s- to show a draft or analysis of what their, what it would look like, their financials would look like, what a seven-year. I don't know if they officially submitted a ten, the seven-year one, they officially submitted the ten-year one. So you're telling me now that they've done the work of the seven-year and they're officially submitting the seven-year to the town?
Uh, you know, I think we should let the, uh, staff and the developer at, at, whenever you decide, Mr. Chairman, in the meeting that you're prepared to address that subject. Uh, the, the actual proposal as it's been submitted now, because there is an updated following up on your requests, uh, in previous meetings. The, uh, developers submitted to the town, uh, responses to that. So i- if you wanna, it's fine with us if you wanna move on to talk about that proposal.
No, I, I asked that question because we're still talking about the tax abatement policy and going back to Ashley's original question of have we gone by a line by line of the seven-year and the ten-year? And so in this forum, folks have said they submitted the seven-year. And so I know the seven-year was just an analysis, it wasn't a submission of a, a request. Unless it's something that I don't know. So I'm not jumping to the Arbeola tax abatement, I'm just asking so that I can answer Ashley's original question of have we done a line by line analysis of the submission? So I'm asking which one of, is it set here the submission or here's the submission?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We, we have not done a, a line by line analysis. Uh, I, I would assume that that would be up to a legal council to do that.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, but we'll need some information because some of it, for example, um, I don't know, I have, I haven't seen the proposal, so I don't know if there's been a promise to start construction within twelve months, for example. Um, you know, so there, there are some things like that, that I, I might, uh, come to you for, Mike.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get the answers from the developer if, uh, we need to.
Okay, great, thank you.
So Ashley, the motion that will be appropriate for this, uh, meeting is to move that the tax abatement policy be sent to council for council to determine whether we should update and amend the policy to be in line with state statute and state law, correct?
Yes. Um, and also, I don't know i- if this would have to be in the motion technically, but just to take a broad look, because it's not just a matter of correcting to align with state law, but also the little things like making sure that if one proposal needs a public hearing, all of them need a p- public hearing.
Agreed. Um, and so, um, and you're saying that if we do this, it won't affect, we'll be violating the policy but not violating state law if we move the Arbeola property tax freeze and fix an agreement forward. We wouldn't be violating state statute, but we'll be violating our policy.
This agreement, I do not believe would violate the policy.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to send this to the full council?
Counselor, before you act, can I just ask Ashley one question? I, I know you don't wanna go to the actual proposal, but there there are gonna be, when we get to it, there're gonna be two options. One is for seven years and one is for ten years. Will the ten years be in accord with the present policy?
Well, that, so, well, that's what I really don't like about the present policy. Because under section six abatement schedule subsection A, it says the following table will be used by the Bloomfield Town Council as a guide.
Mm-hmm.
But there has been a lot of confusion about what that means. Is that a maximum guide, a minimum guide? Is that a suggestion? So as it stands, I could interpret this either way.
I know.
And because of that, I would say that the tenure does not necessarily violate this policy, because I can't tell you exactly what was meant by that section.
Well, I interpret it as the chair that it does violate it because we say seven years, right? We explicitly say seven years. We don't say a guide of a minimum of seven years or up to, right? We say a guide for seven years, right? And so I would say that that limit stops at seven years. Um,
Well.
No more, we can't give no more than seven years because we explicitly outline seven years, right, as a guide.
Well, the guide is five years.
Well, yeah. So, I would say the ten years, I would say the ten years violates that, but, uh, we'll get to that when we get to the, um, actual, uh, request. Because maybe they're not asking for, uh, that's why I asked the question earlier, are we, did they submit the seven years or did they submit the ten-year? Um, proposal. Um, so all that to say, I think we need to, uh, move this to the, the, the council so that we can clarify it in the coming weeks.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So we're asking to move to the full council discussion of possible action regarding the update on the tax abatement policy right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, cuz I'd have a hard time moving forward on a proposal from a developer if we haven't solidified that language first. Because they may, to your point, be asking for something that's in opposition to or not consistent with the policy.
Yeah, so that's why, yeah, that's why I asked earlier, are we talking about the seven or we're talking about the ten?
Right.
Because if we're talking about the seven, then it would not violate the policy. If they submitted the ten and they can't, and they are sticking with the ten, then it violates the policy. And then we have to, in my opinion, table it until we update the policy. But if
Right.
they're talking about the seven, I think we can move forward because it's in line with the current policy as it, as it stands. And Ashley would just do some, uh, clearing up and making sure that the policy explicitly says for transparency purposes that we do a tax of, uh, we do a, um, public hearing and fix some other things of like taking out the word as a guideline and just se- 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 securing it up. And so I think we, if it's seven years, we can chew, uh, walk at the same time.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
So that's why I asked for that clarity earlier. So is there, is there a motion on the floor to move this?
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's going to the town council. India or council clerk, can we do that at the very next town council? Uh, because there will be some time constraints, I'm told. Uh, okay, we did that. Oh, where was that? Did this. All right, we'll go back up to, uh, our discussion of possible action regarding the question for the tax abatement at Arbeola Blue Hills. Who needs the floor?
Mr. Chairman, you have, uh, Jeff Semen here from the developer and Mike Gorman and team from, uh, Gorman and York. Um, I think Mr. Semen, they have submitted in writing, which was distributed a, um, response to your request, um, and it, it includes two options, and I'll, uh, let, uh, Jeff give a brief presentation.
From you, Jeff.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, well, thank you for, um, for having us, uh, this evening. Uh, to have this opportunity to, um, to speak to you. Um, as, um, as Mike and John explained, um, somewhat, um, and also as Attorney Moore had explained, um, we submitted two options, uh, for, uh, abatement, uh, programs. Uh, we had previously submitted this, um, uh, seven-year program that it, that, uh, included seventeen units. Uh, but there was a request from members of the council that could we add more affordable units? So we looked at options for how that might work and came up with, um, uh, an option two that would then, um, include twenty units and would be for a ten-year term, and then tweak some of the other, uh, terms of how that would work, which we laid out in the memo. So the way we approach this is the basic terms of the, uh, the memo that we submitted outlining our proposed, uh, abatement, uh, uh, request. There's an option one and an option two. So the option one is the, uh, seventeen units over seven years, and the, and the option two is twenty units, uh, over ten years. Uh, we would be comfortable either way. So, um, it's really to give the town, uh, another option for is there an opportunity to, um, create some additional affordable units or not? But as I said, we would be, uh, um, fine with either of the two options, one or two.
I, if I may, I'll just add that the other, uh, request that, uh, we passed along was whether or not the project could include a project labor agreement. And, uh, Jeff, uh, you know, you should weigh in, this, this is your response, but uh, the response was the project, uh, can't afford it financially. And, uh, from our perspective and as this group knows, we do a lot of this sort of analysis and that's the case, uh, in the current market, construction costs have gone up and, uh, you know, margins have been squeezed to historically low levels. And unfortunately, these projects just don't have the room for an additional fifteen or twenty percent increase in, in particularly in labor costs, uh, along with all the increases in, in construction materials costs that we've seen. So, uh, Jeff, if you feel free to elaborate on that, but, uh, I, I believe that's correct, that's your answer.
Um, yeah, what you said is right, uh, you know, if there is a project labor agreement going to be associated with a project and generally we see them when they're, uh, associated with maybe funding or grant or something, either federal or state level funding. There may be, uh, request or requirement for a PLA. Uh, but that would, for us to even consider that, it would have to be upfront, we would have to have incorporated that as part of the original um, structuring of the project and our, uh, original negotiation and work with the general contractor. Um, so where, you know, we're to the point where, um, we would be going backward to try to incorporate any kind of a PLA at this point, so it would, it's just not in any way feasible at this point in time, just structurally, but also as Mike pointed out, it does add, um, a, a substantial amount. Um, you know, sometimes you can, um, you know, a lot of the, um, union rates tend to be more commercially focused, uh, but over the years, um, um, some of the unions have, have, uh, established residential scales or they're willing to negotiate. But even with those negotiated residential scales, it does certainly add, um, uh, substantially to the cost of the, uh, of the project. So, um, at this point in time, it's not something that we could make part of our project.
So, um, committee members may have read about PLAs being used in some of the Hartford conversion projects, but uh, and this, I guess, is sort of evidence of what Jeff was referring to a minute ago. Uh, in those projects, uh, the Capital Region Development Authority is using state Connecticut bond money uh, to help support those projects. And the way those, those projects work typically is you use some averages, it averages out about sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, per residential unit. So in this case, uh, with a hundred and sixty units, it would be i- i- it would be the, the comparable, if you will, would be that the state of Connecticut would come in with about ten million dollars of bonding support. Uh, and that bonding support's done, uh, historically has been done at around three percent, uh, thirty year term. And in cases like that, where the state's coming in with, you know, literally millions of dollars at on a thirty year, uh, low interest, very low interest rate loan, then you, you have read about PLAs being used, uh, but not in a case, uh, where it's simply a, a reduction in, uh, the property tax payments, which would be made over a period of time.
Good question. Just, just for my, myself. Are PLA, PLA, PLAs similar to, you know, twenty twenty-five versus Davis Bacon in past years?
It's what's typically referred to as prevailing wage or it, it's essentially uh, requiring the contractor to pay, uh, union rates, uh, on labor.
I have a question. Do you plan on using contractors that have apprenticeship programs? That's something I really would like to see.
Uh, I'm sorry, they have, uh, what kind of program?
Apprenticeship.
You know, again, those tend to be with, um, you know, apprenticeship programs tend to be affiliated with unions specifically. I'm not sure that general contractors, at least I'm not familiar with, general contractors having their own. Um, perhaps s- some do, I don't know, but, um, but right now, I don't know whether, uh, there are, you know, what kind of apprenticeship programs are associated with our current contractor or any of the subcontractors that they're currently working with.
Well, I, I know that if you're an electrician, you gotta go through apprenticeship program. If you're a, uh, tin knocker, you gotta go through apprenticeship program. And if, uh, you're a plumber, you gotta go through apprenticeship program to get your license for these, uh, for these type of licenses. So I'm, I'm not sure how, how you don't think that these contractors should have apprenticeship programs? And what type of safety programs do they have set in place? What type of safety training do they have set in place?
Well, the safety programs are very rigid and very strict. Um, certainly the, um, any general contractor's insurance, uh, carrier uh, stipulates those guidelines and they are very well, people take them very seriously, they're very strongly implemented. Generally, what they'll do is they hire an outside insurance consultant that actually comes on site and, you know, makes sure that everyone, um, follows all the requirements. So I, I think from that perspective, um, uh, I think there's a very strong program. Um, but, um, in terms of, I, you may know more, uh, you may know better than I do, but in terms of how, uh, someone gets a, a plumbing license, whether that is through, um, an apprenticeship program with that specific subcontractor, um, and they have a, a program of apprenticeship, um, that's a little bit deeper into the construction side of it than I would typically, um, uh, get into, but I could find out on that specifically, you know, what might, any of the subcontractors that will be working on the project, what they may have. I could, I could look into that.
I have one more question. Who do you plan on using for your, uh, general contractor?
Um, it's a firm that we've used on multiple projects, um, uh, they've, um, the, the name of the contractor is, uh, Black Diamond Construction. Um, they're kind of reorganizing the, the, the parent company is an entity, uh, contractor called Trinity Construction that's based in Boston, and then they also have a, an office in upstate New York near where we're located. And, uh, they're just kind of organizing, splitting their kind of commercial and residential work. Um, and focusing their residential work under this Black Diamond, uh, brand. Um, so that's the contractor. We've done multiple projects with them. We're finishing a project with them in Albany, New York now. It's two hundred and twenty-two apartments. Um, uh, so a larger project than what we're currently looking to do in, um, uh, in Bloomfield and they've done other projects for us. So we feel very comfortable with them as a general contractor, um, uh, to, to do this job, uh, here in Bloomfield.
No question. So it's a contractor out of New York and Boston. And are they gonna be putting bids out for local contractors to work? Because you told, you told me, well, it is said in your proposal that eighty construction jobs. And so if Black Diamond or what's the parent company, Trinity Construction, have contractors elsewhere in Boston and New York, that gives them good rates on this thing, what's stopping them from bringing people from outside of the state into Bloomfield to do this job and then leave? You know, my concern about the project labor agreement is that, you know, this is a fifty-two million dollar job. Um, we just bonded thirty million dollars for our libraries and we mandated a PLA. And so if, you know, if you wasn't in here asking for a tax fixing agreement, then you would be open to use whatever contractor you want, because it's the private market, you're not asking for public subsidies, but you're asking for public subsidies. I do appreciate you going up to the twelve percent, um, to match our inclusionary zoning housing at in the additional units at twenty. But I think the project labor agreement, um, is very crucial. And if we can't get the project labor agreement, I think it's crucial for us to make sure that we hire Bloomfield residents so that this revenue is circulated into our community and not extracted. And so can you speak to, um, to this committee, because you're asking for a public subsidy on luxury housing, not affordable housing, on luxury senior housing? How you're gonna ensure that those eighty construction jobs, um, are going out to Connecticut-based companies, particularly Bloomfield and the Greater Hartford companies, whether they're electrician companies, plumbers, uh, roofers? Um, how are we gonna get the building trades in, involved in this?
Um, well, the, um, well, the PLA and then local labor are sort of two separate things. Uh, so PLA, um, you know, is a negotiated deal with, um, uh, the unions. Um, but in, in terms of where, um, local labor, local businesses, uh, where that's a, um, uh, a concern, uh, with the community as it, you know, often is. The way I, uh, have seen that approach is because, I mean, we need a certain number of plumbers. I don't know how many plumbers, uh, live in Bloomfield. Um, and they're, they, they use vendors, you know, they'll use vendors for materials and services. Um, what we would, um, uh, typically see is that the contractor or, or whether it's uh, responsibilities by us, the developer, that we, and, uh, ultimately on the management side, when we're managing the project, is we will proactively reach out into the community. Uh, it's similar to what we do also, even in, in the renting, to make sure that, um, every, whether you're hiring a, a worker or whether you're hiring a business or you're purchasing a product, whoever might be interested in responding and participating, that they would become aware. So we proactively, uh, uh, advertise, um, connect with organizations within the community that would have relationships with these existing people or businesses. And traditionally with projects I've seen, um, where that's a standard requirement, whether they're state, federal or just locally, um, structured to, to have such a requirement. That's how I would normally see a local labor, local business, um, requirement fulfilled or at least a, because they're generally established as goals. And then you have to make efforts to try to achieve those goals, because it's impossible to guarantee that you're going to hire a certain number of people or use a certain number of businesses in a community, because those services or skills may not be available.
So I hear that and I appreciate that response, because if I remember, the Arlo Flats and Michael or John can tell me if I'm wrong, um, the Arlo Flats, uh, development, there were goals to hit for Bloomfield residents and they had a compliance officer mandating that because they received the tax abatement. And so, um, I would like to see the one in four that we did on the library, we hit it on the library. And so I would at least out of the eighty, um, jobs, would like to see at least twenty people from either the Greater Hartford or specifically from Bloomfield, working on this project, um, if this tax fixing agreement, uh, is pushed through. Uh, and so Mike, I don't know if you were around at the time when the council, um, developed that, that, that agreement with Arlo Flats, another luxury, um, apartment complex that received the tax fixing agreement. Um, any thoughts related to, um, making sure that either it's apprentice, twenty apprentice? And I'll leave it to, uh, Council Oliver, because he's the expert in this arena. But I would really, really like to see that we get at least twenty people, um, from this area working on those job, on the, working those jobs.
Uh, honestly, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I don't recall. I mean, I think that was Arlo Flats was twenty thirteen, wasn't it? So twelve, twelve, thirteen years ago, I, I don't recall whether it was or it wasn't. And, and yes, we did, uh, we worked on it. Uh, I think that was actually maybe the first or second project we worked on for Bloomfield. And it did include an abatement, uh, but I don't recall the terms of it.
Those, but I'm sure the town staff can pull it up when they're drafting.
We should be able to look it up.
This moves for, if they're drafting an agreement, um, to include those goals, um, in there and have some type of compliance around meeting those goals. Any other questions for members of the committee before I go into my questions?
Yes, um, so I was looking where you said ten percent of construction work by Bloomfield-based minority businesses. I think that kind of ties into the last question, was a good segue. Could you kind of speak more to that and how you ensure that would happen and it may be a similar answer that you just gave?
Um, yes, it is a similar answer and that's what, like I said, it's, um, uh, in, in this, over the years, these, you know, requirements or goals have kind of evolved with how they're implemented to kind of deal with the realities of, um, are these services available at these levels in this location at, you know, within the budget of whatever the project needs to be successful? And so that would be the approach, um, uh, that we would take would be to, um, make sure that these proactive measures are made, these proactive steps are taken to make sure that anyone, um, uh, that would be in the community that might be interested in providing that service is aware that there's a need for that service. So that's how we would approach it. But having strict guidelines, even if they're, um, twenty-five percent or something, to have those as fixed requirements at this point in time, um, isn't something that I think that we could commit to, just because I, I don't think there's any way for us to ensure that, that we could fulfill it. Um, it, especially in any kind of a, uh, uh, cost that would be consistent with, um, uh, with our current budget and that, of course, is the reason we're, where we're talking to you now is because just making it all work uh, overall is, is difficult, it's challenging right now. So, um, we're certainly ready to, um, do whatever we can. Um, you know, this is a project that we're going to own long-term, a project that we're going to manage with our own management company. And, um, you know, hiring local people that, especially on a management side, people that have lived in the community or live there now currently are ideal. Um, so we're prepared to, to, uh, establish these goals. Um, but to, to agree to fixed numbers, percentages or whatever, I just don't think it's something that we're uh, practically able to commit to.
And that wasn't, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I'll just finish this. I wasn't, um, insinuating that you should give, um, a set number, but just to ask how you would attempt to meet the goals that you have exercised, um. But, I mean, you can't make a guarantee, but what you can do is you can show your efforts.
Right, exactly.
And, and that's accountability, right? Um, and I, and I think that's a good measure without having, um, a hardline agreement. I did want to go back to, um, thank you for breaking down the page six of the, um, presentation that you submitted, going through years one through seven and a percentage breakdown, which was easy to follow, because you're gonna reduce by five percent each year, whether it's seven years, starting at seventy-five or whether ten years, starting at ninety. And, um, this may be a segue for Councilor McClary, but what it doesn't tell us, and I got clarification, initially you were looking at a potentially plus or minus nine million dollar, um, tax revenue based on the project. And this was before the ask of the abatement. So what I would be interested in understanding is, what does those tax revenues look like now with the abatement and the percentages that you're applying? And do know, I understand that it's not even built. So you don't have a number of an exact value, right? But we can use projections, we can use current values and then make projections based on that. So you can use that potential assessed value to give projections on what the seven year tax collection rate would look like, plus or minus, and on the ten year. Did you guys prepare those numbers?
But before you answer that, I want to stick on to the project labor agreement and then
Okay, I'm sorry, no worries.
I have questions related to their cap rate and ex, and exit, and, um, their exit assumption, if they do have it. Um, but back to the project labor agreement, um, you keep saying whatever, you're willing to do whatever you can. Um, in order to get my, my support, um, I think we must figure out a way that a PLA or otherwise, that Bloomfield residents get jobs on this project, um, in order to get my support. Because if you were telling me that you were gonna use a Bloom, a Connecticut-based company to do the construction, I wouldn't be so adamant about this. But because this company is out of Boston and out of New York, um, you have people coming from those areas and they're doing the work and they're taking the revenues back to, uh, to, to their communities. And they're doing the work and you're taking the revenues back to uh to to their communities. I agree, I. I'm a huge supporter of using whatever you want in a free market economy, uh, because. You know, you you're using your own the uh capital stack to develop it. But when you come to ask for a tax affixing agreement on luxury apartments and you're asking residents of Bloomfield. To subsidize this cost when they're already seeing a four percent shift from commercial to residential um in this revow. I think it's very important for those residents to be able to have confidence that when they drive by that site. That they're gonna see people like those people, uh, like them who live in the community, working on a job. So um. The goals, I'll simply get excuses about, oh, we can't find anybody when I know that there's the building trades, when I know there's the minority. Construction council where people are looking for work, young people are looking for work who are apprentices. Uh, I really would like to see some guarantees uh about um, you know, making sure that Bloomfield based workers are hired. Or Greater Hartford area are hired on this project because in my eight, nine years on this council. Anytime we do a project like this, all I hear is excuses of why they couldn't do it. Um, and so I I just simply want to make sure that. Um, that happens. And if you, I appreciate you moving up to the the twelve percent affordable housing, but putting people to work. Is key, particularly because we're given the tax fixing agreement on luxury housing and Bloomfield. Already seen the effects of the development in the town center when we have given tax fixing agreements to luxury apartments.
Well, um, you know, I appreciate, you know, all those sentiments, um, you know, of course, the. The um significant benefits, I think our project provides it. There is, it's a blighted sight that hasn't seen any development in sixty years. And there's there are reasons why it hasn't been developed, so there's certainly challenges with the site. Certainly there's challenges with, there are challenges with new business. Uh, it's like twelve thousand dollars a year that the the project currently pays and property taxes will be paying, whatever that amount. You know, ends up being in the end and paying forever going forward is is, you know, hugely significantly higher. So that that's definitely a benefit and certainly having the housing uh in town is is really a benefit to keep. Uh, looking for other benefits, I understand the ask, uh, but these hard requirements. Um, at this point are just difficult to um to commit to. Uh, not knowing whether we'd be able to fulfill them. I can tell you that we did look at several um significant Connecticut. Say local, even general contractors, and they ended up being um uh quite a bit higher. Um, so we definitely worked hard to work with um. Uh, local general contractors. It just didn't work out that way. Um, so. I I understand what you're saying, but to to realistically say at this point in time that we would make firm commitments to hire. Uh, certain numbers of individuals or work with certain number of businesses, it's just. Like, we couldn't commit to it because I don't think we could be certain that we would be able to fulfill it. Um, I think. The other woman was mentioning before about how how do you verify it?
Jeff, one second, because you made a a a comment and I want to uh about the 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 um, and I don't want to. We can talk about this offline, but I just want to make the point that if you ask any minority construction person out there right now, I can name one. Um, uh, Rick Rowe, um, anytime we put goals in place, it never happens, right? And I think you have a partner in the town, if we uh say that we would like to see twenty people. Or twenty percent of the construction jobs go to uh Bloomfield residents and or um. Uh, uh, to Greater Hartford, we have apprenticeship program, we have the Minority Construction Council. I know the town will help you do marketing re uh and recruitment. We did it on our library project. We literally just put twenty-one people. Um, to work um on that new library. Um, and so I don't think, and we know they're in the community. I don't think it will be hard to find people to do the job because we just did it. We just went through it. And so. Um, it is a perfect opportunity for you to just continue um to build on that momentum. Of putting Bloomfield residents to work, particularly when you're saying that you're asking for. Uh, nine point, that you can generate nine point three million dollars over uh ten years. Uh, and you're asking the town to take on six point two million dollars in losses. Otherwise, the tax collection that could be collected if we move forward with this. So we're taking a huge loss already. Right? On luxury housing, we didn't see a market study for saying that these apartments. Uh, were needed for luxury senior housing. No one presented that to me tonight. No one presented to me tonight your IRR. It says presented to Gorman New York, your net profit. How do we know that it is really, really hard for you based on the finances? You've submitted information to the bank, right, as a bank transaction, but you didn't submit all the financials to us. Um, and we are the uh fiduciary fiduciant of the town, the town council. We have a duty to the residents of Bloomfield, and if we're gonna make this work, I think Bloomfield residents should be working on the job. And we already have a model that's that shows that the apprenticeship programs that we created on the library project. The twenty-one people that was already hired and completed that work, they all, most of them came out to the grant, the ribbon cutting. Uh, you can just build on that success.
Do, do we know what the mod, the mod rate is for Black Diamond?
Um, I don't know.
Do you know what the mod rate is for the parent company?
I don't know.
Well, because those are very important questions for us. We want responsible contractors building in our town.
And Jeff, we wouldn't ask for these quest, we wouldn't ask these questions if it wasn't you coming in for a tax fixing agreement. Right? We just went through a revow and our residents took a a a significant uh shift. Four percent for commercial property to residential and and for years, as I mentioned to the staff. Right? We're currently in a phase in, right? And residents are talking about how expensive their property taxes are. I don't want to set up future. I know I'm not running for reelection, but I don't want to set future council members up where they. They're in a position where they found, where I found myself this year because previous councils gave tax abatements away without. Making sure that the community got to benefit from it. And so, again, I do appreciate you putting the twelve percent affordable housing in there. But if we can really make sure that those construction jobs, particularly because you're using an out of state contractor. Um, is Bloomfield residents or Greater Hartford, I think that's very important to me to get my support. We're almost there.
Right. Well, certainly it is a huge benefit to the town in terms of this new project and taxes and the other benefits. Um, but in terms of the quality, of course, the contractor, you know, we're selecting contractors that we feel. Um, are going to be able to do work. They're going to be providing a completion and performance bond, so um. They certainly hit that qualification and our lender scrutinizes them quite hard as well. Um, so uh. We we can get qualification um information about the general contractor for the. Um, council to review to understand who the who the contractor is.
And can we shift to, um, so we can't commit to making sure that the the and the, if we were to move this project for putting those. Uh, twenty jobs for Bloomfield residents or Greater Hartford area or Connecticut based contractors in there?
I just don't see that we could commit to that without knowing that we could fulfill it. Um, and again, doing it, you know, I think we have. This had been at the very, you know, say a couple of years ago when we were first planning it. You know, to incorporate the requirements of how we might go about doing it, maybe uh have already reached out to organizations to see who's available. You know, what kind of qualified um uh uh vendors or or contractors or workers. But at this point in time, I don't think there's any way we could say confidently that we would know that we could fulfill that request. So I just don't think it would be appropriate to agree to something that we didn't know that we could do.
So that's my point, right? You can't, you didn't reach out to people, you didn't do this, right? And so that's what I'm gonna hear in two years when the project is completed. You're gonna say, well, we wasn't able to reach, have enough time to reach out to people and those eighty construction jobs doesn't happen. For people of Connecticut or residents of Bloomfield or Greater Hartford area. And so that's why that last statement you just made. It's all, it's more important to make sure that in order to move this forward, those twenty jobs are with Bloomfield. So that you can work with the town, you can work with the Minority Construction Council, with Jennifer Little Greer. You can work with Joe Tonner and the Building Trades to make sure that they identify local contractors. So that when you do go out and you ask those people, you can even do a job fair at three thirty park for jobs for Bloomfield residents. We've done it before. And so that last statement that you just made with all due respect. Isn't, it's the reason why, and the very reason why I'm pushing for these jobs. In order to get my support to move this forward. I think that's gonna be very crucial, but you can make the decision. Um, on whether you would want those twenty jobs for Bloomfield residents or the residents of Connecticut. Given that this company is coming out of Boston or New York, um, to make sure that our residents have it, particularly. When we're losing six point two million dollars, because we can say, you know what? No tax fixing agreement, and I'm sure you'll work value engineer your project and make it happen. If not, then somebody else will come. And and develop that site. There's a reason why um this property is being looked at. Um, for housing because it's on a main thoroughfare transit oriented development in a gateway district. And yes, it's been vacant for ten years, but I don't think it's gonna be vacant for ten more years. Um, moving forward. And so that's why it's important for um us to have those jobs.
Yeah, it's been vacant for sixty years.
A sixteen, twenty, thirty, I don't think it's.
Sixty, you know, um, but anyway, so it used to be, I don't know, some people even uh maybe it's longer, but I think the uh. The uh drive-in movie theater closed, uh, I think in the sixties or seventies, but.
Hey, Mister Smetana, don't age me like that. I'm not sixty and I I went to plenty of drive-in movies.
Okay, I'm just going by what what people went there, uh, what I'm told, so.
Let's shift to the financials. I know uh the counselor had questions about um. The finances, we can shift there because I have some too. So if you want to answer her questions, if you remember, if not.
I'll restate, no problem. I'm just wondering, going in initially to the project, there was a loose assumption of nine million dollars in tax revenue. Over ten years, if I read correctly. And now that you've come back to the table with an ask of an option of a seven year. Or ten year abatement, we can understand the reduction each year by five percent. But how does that affect what would have been nine million, give or take, over ten years um tax revenue? Without an assessment, what do those numbers look like? Give or take, I don't hold you to exact numbers, I need to say that disclaimer for the public. But have you guys worked up any numbers now that you're looking for an abatement, what the adjustment on that tax collection rate would look like loosely?
Um, well, Goman in New York really did that analysis, um, so there would sort of be an independent analysis. The um, so I I think that um. Uh, it's it's really better for Goman in New York to do that, uh, because there are certain assumptions in terms of uh. Um, assessed value and mill rates um that um would be better for them to, and they're in a better position to um. Uh, to provide that, but certainly I I think between, as Mike was saying earlier, between now and the meeting. Um, if if we're hopefully uh going to be um talking about this at the next council meeting, um, that they could. They could put those numbers together, but um, you know, and I I think as you also mentioned uh in your initial um. Question that um uh it would be based on whatever. The assessment really works out to be and then whatever the those uh actual tax rates are uh at that point in time.
Right, and we know that can vary year to year as far as the mill rate. Um, but even just projections based on our historical perspective. Um, will be helpful so that the public can understand, um, not only are we gonna be gaining a beautiful property. But as far as the reduction in the tax collection, what does that look like? I I think everybody would love to have that information, just to have a holistic um view of the project in its entirety with this requested change.
Sure, and I'll I'll make an attempt here. Unfortunately, Brad Sev, who runs our analytical side, was not available to join us tonight. But I did go over some uh preliminary look that uh he and a couple of his people prepared. Uh, based on the updated numbers that uh Jeff's group, Jeff Smetana's group provided to us. And I I think the, it's fair to say at this point that whether you decide to go with a seven or ten year or seventeen or twenty. Uh, you know, as as Councilman McClary set out, uh, maybe a week ago now. Uh, he thought that it would be fair to increase the length of the term of the abatement. If the developer was prepared to increase the number of affordable housing units. So. You know, we now have to sort of re go back in and rebuild that model a little bit based on some different assumptions, but I think it's fair to say that. It it's not gonna move the needle dramatically in terms of whether it's a. Uh, or how much of a net positive fiscal impact this project would have on the town. Uh, so we'll have numbers, as Jeff mentioned a minute ago, we'll have numbers in time for the upcoming council meeting, but. I I don't think you're gonna see much of a material difference, uh, whether it ends up being a ten year abatement uh with different uh. Burn off rates and a higher number of affordable or a seven year with a lower number of affordable. The. The the result is still the same. It's a substantial uh net fiscal positive for the town, of course. Given that it's vacant land now, uh, this is all, virtually all, other than about twelve thousand dollars, I think it's paying current taxes. It's entirely a uh a net fiscal upside despite the abatement of some portion of taxes that Councilman McClary has referred to.
I'll pick you back after you, Councilman Clark.
Yeah, I hear that, Mike. Um, but I can also say that there is also a net loss to the town and there will be a shift. I guarantee you, I've read a random model, there will be a shift when they go into the next uh uh, you know, and I obviously I'm making an assumption of what. Um, the real estate market would be uh based on its current trends, but we would lose somewhere near six point two million dollars, right? Right? Because we would gain nine point three million dollars in positive net value over uh the ten years. But we also lose the six point two million, and that's not even including indirect uh services that the town will provide. Uh, to these folks, whether it's senior police, fire.
Our our numbers, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Finish, finish what you were saying.
No, go ahead. Your numbers?
Uh, I was just gonna say, our numbers did include both, they showed the. The gross revenue with no abatement, then the net revenue with the abatement. And then we did do the calculation using. Sort of the accepted standard, community services costs, the kinds of things that you were just describing to net that out to a net number, but. I know when I I looked at a, we did a quick, but because I thought your. Your uh question in one of the previous meetings about the impact on the ground list was an interesting one. Took me a minute to catch up to you on it, but I got it. And uh, I know we looked at, I I just, this is not based on the. Uh, revised numbers that uh Jeff uh submitted just just a few days ago, but uh. To your point of, uh, I'm not quite sure how to describe it, but to your point of the impact on the mill rate. Of whether that was an abatement or not an abatement, it, when we ran our model, the the uh mill rate. On the one seven year scenario, the, I'm just trying to look, make sure I have the right numbers. The the mill rate was thirty-five point six four under the one scenario. And with the abatement, it went from thirty-five point six four to thirty-five point five five. So it had a point zero nine. Impact on the mill rate. That abatement that you, and you just referred to the number, I think it was. Uh, what was it? It was six million, I think, something like that.
Two million dollars.
Six point two million dollars, yeah. You know, you're talking about a, an overall grand list of uh. Two point eight billion.
Yeah, but the net grand list, right, eh excluding all of the, excluding all of the um. I see Director Hill, is he on, excluding all of the uh, what's the word I'm looking for, all of the. The exemptions, right? We're gonna, we're gonna exempt them up to seven years at whatever percentages, and then the remaining has to go into the grand list, correct, uh, Director Hill? Which then goes into taxes, which means that residents of Bloomfield, commercial and residential would have to pay for that. So. Yeah, we're seeing about nine hundred thousand to a million dollars a year, well, roughly nine hundred thousand dollars a year, let's say nine hundred thousand dollars a year. Over ten years, but nobody can tell me what after the exemption, the added cost that will be. On the, and we just have seventy-two million dollars in value, so we exempt them, you know, by twenty percent. The rest of that goes into there and it impacts the the mill rate that people has to pay, right? Correct?
Are you asking? Sorry, the numbers I gave you were based on an adjusted net grand list, those those thirty-five point six four to thirty-five point five five. Now. That's not, again, let me qualify that by saying that's not based on the latest numbers. Qualify that by saying that's not based on the latest numbers that Jeff submitted. That's a a previous analysis, which I. I think was submitted to you uh to your committee earlier. But here here's the point, I think that that, you know, I would say on behalf of our client, all our clientele, here's the point. Really that to focus on is, is uh the given project, uh a net uh material. Uh fiscal uh positive impact to the town. And the answer to that question here is no question, absolutely no question it is.
Question for you. I I hear you say that, so can I ask a question because um Gorman New York seems to have this and maybe if you don't want to answer tonight. Uh maybe we can uh an executive session if it's proprietary, um but what is the cap rate? And the exit assumption with the tax abatement and without the tax abatement? I know I asked for that and it provided to me in the the document that. Uh Gorman New York would have that number, I asked for the IRR too, internal rate of return, uh which is their net profit. I would like to see that with. The tax abatement and without the tax abatement, because then it's gonna tell me whether this project is. Can you give me a percentage? What is the percentage of the IRR? Is it industry standard? Is it over? Um what is it?
Jeff, I'm, how do you want to respond to that? I don't want to reveal any confidential information here, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for deferring uh to me, Mike. Yeah, um. I think those are um the types of questions that wouldn't be discussed in a in an open meeting. So what we've done previously, I and we can. Uh continue to work with Gorman and York uh uh on the on the different models in terms of expressing and uh. Uh showing what those various uh assumptions are. And um and then uh I I think that Gorman and York could discuss them uh uh with you. Uh but certainly. You know, you know that it's a challenging uh development market, a challenging financing market, that all kinds of uh. Margins are are thinner than they need to be, or or thinner than we'd like them to be. And that, but still at the end of the day, we have to have a project that the bank will um find acceptable in terms of. Approving our construction loan and then we need to have a project that works. So as you said, yeah, they're consistent with market uh conditions, but we can um provide Gorman and York um. Uh different models and then I I think they can maybe uh discuss with you what some of those returns are, what some of those. Rates are that you're you're interested in.
I I'm very interested in it because, you know, we need to see the numbers as a committee and as a council. Uh because we want to make sure that we're not uh padding uh profit, right? We don't, we're not giving a tax abatement to pad profit, right? Yeah, I hear that it may be a net positive to uh the community, but if it's a net positive and we're giving it to them and we see that. You know, it's padding profit, I think I have a a problem with it. Um I would love to see. Um, you know, what you're underwriting at, are you underwriting at a five point five to six percent cap rate? And projecting between fifteen to twenty percent um IRR? Like, I want to see those things so that we make sure that uh we're not just giving a tax abatement to pro- to to pad profit. And I think that's important for us to make a decision. Um I don't know what other members of the committee thinks, but I think that's important for us. Uh to understand before I make a vote. I want to make sure it's in line with what financials, because other developers have come in. Um with luxury apartments and we've told them that based on their financials, it did not meet the standard of. Uh a tax fixing agreement, and so it would be ashamed of us if we don't do the right thing here. And ask the same questions around the financials for this developer to make sure that the residents of Bloomfield are getting a good deal. And that we're not asking them to open their pocketbooks uh to pad profits of a developer.
You know, I, what I can say that may be helpful is that on a short-term uh tax abatement of seven or ten years. Uh the market prices the expiration of that tax abatement into their valuation and we're. We we are very aware of a project right now that is uh that the developer uh is trying to sell. And it has in place a uh tax abatement. And the developer's been unable to sell it because the buyer, all buyers that have looked at it. Have said, well, you know, as soon as that tax abatement expires, which is in a few years. In the real estate business, seven years is a is a uh the equivalent of a day for most people. But as soon as the the tax abatement expires, the the reduced taxes that result from a tax abatement. Uh go back to full taxes, which has the impact, of course, of reducing the net income. And when you apply the capitalization rate that you're referring to, Councilman, uh you know, when you apply that cap rate to the. Uh net income uh once the tax abatement has expired, I mean, it. There there is no extra profit left. You you know, there would be, i- if you had a thirty-year tax abatement, which there is one. Uh yeah, East Hartford is just in the middle of, oh well, actually, it's finished. Uh it's a twenty-nine year tax abatement. And there's no question that that will have the long-term, that's a twenty-nine year reduction. In taxes and therefore uh an increase in the net operating income. And if that developer decides to sell, they will benefit from that higher net income. In a short term, seven or ten year, that's just not happening out there. Anybody who's buying these kinds of assets. Is typically buying them with a ten-year with the plan to hold for ten years. That means that their tax abatement's gonna expire during that period of time, so they price it in, you know, that's what any buyer would do. Uh so I I don't think it's uh, I I don't think we're seeing to to use your term that that it's gonna pad profit. For a developer in this case, uh the the market prices it out. You know, they they know they they can do this, it's just math. So they run the NOI out until the end of the tax abatement and say, well, there's our net operating income. That that's what we're gonna use to price it and we'll apply our cap rate to that, uh you know, unabated net operating income.
So I would like to see the, I would like to see the numbers in a percentage with it and without it.
Got it.
Because again, right, with it, uh with the tax abatement, we'll get nine point three, roughly not estimated nine point three. Million dollars in revenue, without it, we're giving fifteen point six million dollars, that's a six million dollar giveaway. Uh meanwhile, residential taxpayers will see higher tax bills during this period, and the grand list will shift continuously. That's not fair. I think it's a valuable project, but if you give us the numbers and we can justify it. Um just like you presented the numbers to the bank and they give you the, you know, your cap rate, eighty probably, you know, seventy percent debt, right? Um and thirty percent regular capital that you have or from investors. Probably from, you know, pension funds, family funds, et cetera, or endowments, I don't know how you're getting your, your, your. You you know, your funding, but just like you would submit to those folks and they do their due diligence, I think it's in. It's imperative for the finance committee of the town of Bloomfield, when we're given a tax fixing agreement, I have to do similar due diligence. So we can get those numbers, everything on that paper that was submitted to us, that said, provided to Gorman New York. Mike, if we need to ask Ashley and um and Attorney Crumbie if it's appropriate for us to do. Um an executive session, but I think it's the right thing to present it to the community. Um I do understand that you have some concerns about putting your information out there, but I will talk with the town attorney and see uh. How we can go about transparently putting this information out there. Or if it will hurt the project and the funding source uh to do it in executive session, so that we make sure we're not giving away. Um unnecessary tax fixing agreement. That's it for me tonight. I don't know if any other members of the committee has it, um and if anybody would like to make a recommendation to the town council.
Um I have no further questions. Uh I appreciate your questions, Council McCare- McCleary does even a deeper dive on a breakdown on the seven and ten-year abatement. So thank you for pointing those other issues out, the cap rate and the IRI. And then I would just recommend that a way for your contractor, your GC to find out how we successfully got. A very hefty uh Bloomfield resident workforce is to talk to the contractor, the GC for the library project. I'm sure they'll be happy to help. Yes, thank you so much.
Excuse me, just um. Just to ask another question, so if the option one that we proposed to the seven-year. Um abatement, if um it's understood that that's. Um conforms to the town's current uh policy. Would it be possible to? Get a vote to in in understanding that in the interim between now and the. A council meeting that uh some of these questions that were asked, that we could furnish this information. That um the committee could recommend um our option one to uh to the full council for consideration?
That's a good question, because I I I really would like to see the twelve percent and that's why I asked the question uh. Of affordable units, that's why I asked the question earlier, which one are we doing the seven or the ten, because. Um and that's another reason why I escalated the tax abatement policy upfront, so that we can address those issues. Because I really would love to see if we're gonna give a tax and fix an agreement. If we go with option one, we're not getting the additional units. We're not getting the project labor agreement or making sure that residents of Bloomfield are on there and we don't know the IRR, we don't know the cap rate. Um and so it's just not fair to the residents of Bloomfield. I hear. You know, they say that, oh, it's gonna be a net positive over ten years, but we also, over those ten years, are leaving money on the table. And if we're leaving money on the table. And it's gonna add to more traffic and it's gonna, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. Uh I hear you, I know there is a pres- a potential time crunch with your with your financing. And so I would leave it to. John Coleman or Mike Gorman to kind of help us out, because I think. The committee has some real serious questions and I don't know if we can meet within the next couple of days to get those questions answered. So that we can move something really, 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 really uh move something. Um and so with that, I see Council Cooper's hand, she may have a recommendation.
Uh Madam Chair. I'm sorry, but sure. You know, I I am interested in one fact that. A faction of this that you went over really was the impact to the grand list. Um and this is more, I gather for our CFO, Mr. Hill, if if there are questions of. Um how the impact of other uh projects. Would be on this project because they're coming um off of uh these abatements. Right? And it would that, would that help in any way? And that's really is what it would be. To this project, it would be a help to this project. Is if that's information can be available, uh is part of whatever it is that you guys are looking at to. Uh to move this package forward. Hopefully, it's understood.
Uh Council, is that a question for me?
It is.
Uh if I uh understand it correctly, with existing tax abatements that are in place expiring. Which is positive to our tax rolls. If that would be helpful to this project, I think it would be. To the town and its uh revenue generation. And uh current taxpayers having their tax liability lower uh by virtue of tax abatement agreements expiring. You know, this project uh, you know, for me, particularly because it is on. Uh long unutilized or underutilized at best land uh is positive. Um and that positive, while it does as uh the developer's request for an abatement. Uh uh identifies is not one hundred percent positive. It it will be at the expiration of the tax abatement agreement, um but the revenue generation. From this proposed project would be positive and, you know, with the market rate, with an affordable component. You know, um sure Gorman could help us uh look at the potential increase in services. Uh across all town departments and offices, um but. Um I I believe we are talking about. Forget the number, was it nine million over the?
Nine million, that's correct.
Uh nine million in tax receipts over the seven or ten-year abatement period. Right? If I take that straight line and, you know, it's probably a a gap on the front end while it's in construction. Um but that is hundreds of thousands of dollars annually uh to the good for the town. Um so I uh have long believed that we. Um what's the old maxim about the forest? Can't see the trees for the forest, or the forest for the trees? You know, there are, all of the questions that council has are are valid, good and positive for Bloomfield. But at the end of the day, uh the council is who's tasked with uh making the 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 final decision. And whether or not there's benefit to Bloomfield rests in their decisions.
Hey, thank you so much, um for your insight. Um the the last question, uh because I did miss it and so. Uh sorry for asking a repeat, not to you, Mr. Hill, but uh to uh either the project manager or Gorman. What is the ask of the tax abatement, the length? I think there in your, you have one um plan put forward, what's the ask for the tax abatement in length?
Seven and ten, option one, seven years, option two, ten. Correct? My Mike and Jeff?
That's right.
So option one has the, has the status quo of the, is it seventeen units? Seventeen and then option two has the twenty. And that's why he asked for the additional three years and I think. The actual three years, I think he's asking for that because that helps subsidize the construction costs for those affordable units. Is that correct, Jeff?
Um, that's right.
So with the seven years, there would be, oh, there would be seventeen um affordable units, correct?
Yes, which is the ten percent and then the option two. Uh aligns with that new inclusionary policy percentage rate of twelve percent, correct, Jeff?
That's right.
Which I think is good and I just was hoping that we would get the at least twenty-five percent of the construction jobs included in. You know, in that package for number two, and if that was the the case, I would be happy um to move forward with option two. Uh because it shows a, it shows it's a community benefit agreement, right? It shows that the community is gonna get a benefit, more affordable housing units to meet our current policy. And our housing plan goes and we're putting people to work. While revitalizing the Blue Hills neighborhood, which hasn't seen best in ten to twenty years. Prior to this year when we did the streetscape pro- project.
And you know, I I do see value in that and I also see value in, um I came in on this part where. Um Council Lloyd um recommended to a um. Uh a sit-down with um the folks from the library. Uh where the PLA was in place and and to see what um could be a possibility, so. Uh that's where I'm at and I thank you everyone for the information. Thanks for accommodating that and and much appreciated.
So Jeff, I'm 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 interested in 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 moving something forward, but it's just a matter of what. Uh your 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 organization, um if I'm not mistaken, it's United. Is it United Group or United Plus?
Um, well, uh. Overall, the parent company is United, is the United Group of Companies, um. The SPE, the special purpose entity that owns the project is a UBH Senior LLC. Uh United Plus is the property manager that will be managing it, so.
Is there any LP funds, funding in your capital source and your capital, uh your fundraising? Can you do any fundraising from any uh pension plans or family plans or? Endowments, et cetera?
Um obviously, there's a lot of equity that goes into these projects, um and we have um. You know, ways that we raise that capital that I think are. I don't know if they're necessarily um relevant to the discussion, but you know, we we have to raise it to uh. To satisfy the bank and support the project costs.
And so I don't know, I I said that and I asked that because I don't know what you are, you you know. You've heard members of the committee raise some questions and, you know. I like the option two with, you know, the the jobs and the additional affordable housing showing your financials. And if, you know, United Group or wherever the parent company is ready to, you know. Move forward with that, I'm ready to make a motion to move forward with. You know, with that community benefit agreement. To recommend to the council while we update our policy. Because I know you have a time crunch, so I don't know. Given all of the information you heard tonight, what do you want to? Sit back and talk with Gorman New York? Do you need to go back to talk to people?
I think, you know, just based on. What Attorney Moore was describing in terms of really. Quantifying the nonconforming. Projects or whatever, I I think that, just given our schedule. That it would probably make the most sense for everyone to just consider the option one. Since that is a conforming project, it's it's a. A structure that Gorman and York has has already looked at, you know, it's basically. You know, a neutral project with it. It's evolved a little bit over the past few months, but always staying consistent with what. The original. Requirements and assumptions were. So, you know, I think what we'd like to do is. Just given our schedule, if the if the council could make a determination on option one. You know, I I think that would probably serve everyone, everyone's interests. Well, and then allow us to move forward. And fulfill some of our commitments that we need with this project.
I hear that and I respect that comment and that thought, but I'm. I'm I'm not interested. I don't, I in the current form cannot support option one, but you know, this is a committee. And so if I see Council Deputy Mayor Lloyd has her hand up. I don't know if she wants to make a motion.
No, not a motion. I'm I'm kind of in alignment with you. It's hard. Jeff, to move forward without those numbers that we asked for. We just kind of need to see the impact to the the tax abatement will have. Versus what you're originally presented. I think that's fair, not only to the committee, but to the public. Additionally. Yes, if we got those numbers, you found a way to speak to, for example, the library general contractor, figured out how they did the commitment for twenty five percent. Maybe you can't get that much, but I I feel confident you can probably get close to that. You made a commitment for ten percent anyway, right? So we have that labor aspect of it. It's just hard for this committee to move forward and say, send it to council. When we don't have the rudimentary information on what that abatement looks like. Right? So if you can get that rather quickly. Then I think that would be fair.
And we're happy to schedule a special meeting, you know, just twenty four hour notice to schedule that. That that public thing. I know the council meeting is on.
The eighth, September eighth.
So we have about a week, right, to do it? And so I don't know, we're gonna work on the tax abatement policy. If, you know. It's it's up to you and your team on how fast you can get that information to us.
Okay. Well, I think. Of course, we've provided quite a bit of information already to Gorman and York. So, you know, I I think they do have. A lot of information on. On the basic proposal. But again, I I think if. The council's interests are going to be to. Try to. Request some of those additional items like the P L As and whatever. I just don't, I just don't see us getting there, just to be realistic. Whatever. And I understand it. Just, you know, having. You know, worked with similar requirements on projects over the years and and knowing all. What's required to 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 ensure it. Certainly, a lot of work can be done to to. Without reach, as I discussed, but trying to. Ensure outcomes is difficult. And I think most of these projects, even even the federal and state projects. Have have shifted more to goals as opposed to requirements, because. Over the years. You know, absolute goals have just proven to be, you know, too difficult to to actually meet. So, so like I said, I I think with our, with that option one, I think we furnished a lot of the financial information. But if if people want to see additional information, we can do that very quickly, I think. And provide it to Gorman and York. And if there's any way to be. Considered by the council or to discuss it further at the, I think it's September eighth meeting. We would. We would appreciate that that process.
Jeff, I hear you. Thank you. Okay.
I'm not asking for P L A. Challenges and we understand the costs associated with that. But you guys presented that you would try to meet a goal of ten percent. And we know that we have just recently met a goal of twenty five percent. And the way it was that was through the apprenticeship. Via the contractors that were used. So I'm just saying confidently, I think your G C can contact. R G C that just did our project. You might be able to. Be pleasantly surprised at the ability to eat that goal, not P L A. So I'm sorry if that was unclear. And then just, I I went to seven years. I want to know what the difference is. Seven year abatement is still gonna look like more than twelve thousand per year. We get that. We definitely get that, right? But if you can break it down, that would be helpful, and I think that is fair for the public to know. At one point, it was presented at nine million dollars tax revenue. Well, what does it look like with the abatement? It's just fair for the public to understand that. Now, your financials that Council McCleary is asking for. Okay, that's another deeper dive, but I definitely want the public to know the adjustment. In the taxes that will be collected, so they can say, okay, we go from nine down to three point five. It's still a good return. Right? Just that brass tax. So thank you.
Yeah, so. The just. We submitted a memo outlining or a request letter. So those employment goals and all those things, those are in our current proposal. So, you know, in terms of the twenty percent. Permanent jobs of Bloomfield residents, twenty percent permanent jobs for minorities, and then. Ten percent construction workers by Bloomfield-based minority businesses. So those are already. In our proposal. So with that seven year agreement, and then the seven year. Program was structured in a way to basically be equivalent to what we had. Provided initially was a ten year. We went from the ten year to the seven year. And those we work with Gorman of New York to to keep those as. Equivalent. So, but we can. We can provide whatever else is needed, but I think. Specifically to the questions you asked, I I think we're on the same page with with what you're looking to see.
Quick question. How can you make sure that the twenty, the employment goals could be permanent job? Like, how do you make sure that? How can you get, ensure that those goals of twenty percent that you, like, never mind, nothing. I get it.
Twenty percent based on the permanent jobs of delineated above at eight is one point four persons. So twenty percent permanent jobs, Bloomfield resident, twenty percent permanent jobs, minorities, that's one point four. And we would just hope that it you wouldn't make it the same person. Okay, I already did the math on it. I can do the easy stuff.
So I I I think we were. Even though we still would like to have that, I think we were pretty settled that. P L A. Possibility was was. Kind of off the table, but what we do want to ensure. Is that those numbers that you have put in there are are. There's a commitment to our Bloomfield residents and or the surrounding Hartford area. I saw that as as pretty positive and if. We could meet those standards. You know, with with great effort, because we already have shown this in the development of the library. So there's already an existing. Plan to to get the word out to these contractors and to these individuals who are. Who have those skills. So it would be. Great if we could make that continue with this project. Possibly some of the same people, but obviously others are experienced in this area as well. So we know. From your conversation before that the P L A was was not. A great possibility, but we do still want to make sure that we. Have a. A good percentage of our resident population involved in this project.
Right. And then also. I'm sorry, just adding to that, too, the the permanent jobs are separate from a P L A. So the permanent jobs. There, that's just. Hiring local residents is obviously in our best interest, and we will look to do.
Thank you.
So I guess we'll hold this on the table until. The staff, John and and Mike, the consultant for Gorman for the town. Gets back to us and I don't know. India, we have some time next week for a special. Finance committee meeting with this item on the agenda. And hopefully, let me just check my calendar real quick. I don't know if. Tuesday is good. It's Tuesday. I know there's a holiday on Monday, Jeff.
We have, we have a governance meeting scheduled for Tuesday.
What about Wednesday?
Yes.
Jeff, does that work for you?
I'll make work whatever, certainly.
And Mike, what about your team?
Sorry, that'll work. We can make that work.
Wednesday at the six.
Wednesday at six.
Yeah, and then if we can have a a draft of the the updated of, if you get asked, Attorney Moore, Attorney Crumbby, to have a draft of the. Updated, and I'm sure they'll work with Gorman New York on that, updated tax abatement, tax fixing agreement, because it's not an abatement, it's a tax fixing agreement. For. For that to be on the agenda as well, so that we can push it to town council too. And if we can squeeze in option two. The ten year with the twenty units and the goals of the twenty percent and having those formulas. I'm willing to support the option number two. Because I think that's. It provides a community benefit, more of a community benefit. Than the option number one. And so I'm I'm more leaning towards option number one, depending on what the cap rate and I R R. Option number two, excuse me, depending on what the cap rate is and I R R is with and without that option number two tax fixing agreement. So. I don't know where the other members of the committee stand, but I'm I'm more interested in making sure we move up to the twenty and with the. The the job, the construction jobs.
On board.
So Jeff, if your team can get the data for Mike, Council Oliver, myself. And then the questions that Lord had. I think we could get that done next week and make sure that if it satisfies everyone on this committee, it's on. It's on the agenda for Monday, and I'll be happy to support that if we can meet those. Those community benefits. All right, no more discussion around that. Thanks, everyone, for spirited and respectful conversation.
It was a great conversation. I appreciate the exchange of ideas. Thank you for your time.
We really appreciate you. We look forward to you being a partner of the town of Bloomfield.
That's the plan. We hope so. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. The next item on the agenda is the this new business discussion and possible action regarding. The Wittenberry Hills Golf Course financials. I see Director Malesko, who oversees Parks and Recs Committee.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, thank you very much for having us. As as well as the other committee members, mayor and deputy mayor. I'm joined here this evening with. Alex McCann, who is represents. Tune Golf, who the management company for Wittenberry Hills Golf Course, as well as committee member from the Golf Committee, John Coleman. The reason for us being here this evening is we're just been working through the committee with Trune Golf and Wittenberry Hills and. The committee to develop the budget for the upcoming year. And as part of that, one of the proposals would be to increase the resident rates at the golf course. By five dollars per walker and two dollars for a cart fee for a for a maximum of seven dollars for golfer. Just a little bit of a background on this over here. Wittenberry Hills came into operation in the early two thousands. We have held these resident rates basically from the inception of it. So. Approximately, you know, twenty three, twenty four years later, at this point in time, with the rising costs of everything. And the needs of the golf course for some of the major capital improvement projects that we need. To put together our analytics and the team put together. Fails if we could raise an additional twenty five thousand dollars, approximately twenty five thousand dollars a year. And revenue to help sustain the golf course. A little bit more of the history behind the golf course and the the budget and the way that it's managed. The the course was, it is town owned, everything is owned by the town. It was purchased, went to referendum back in the the late nineties and constructed in the early two thousands. But since the mid, right around two thousand fourteen, the operation has been fully self-sustaining. So we haven't come to the town requesting funding for anything, and we've been able to do that. Through the hard work of Trune Golf and the management teams and the. And the quality of the golf course that we have. So. In addition to the fees over here, I did provide in the packet a copy of the budget that was put together for the upcoming year. If there are any questions that are pertaining to the budget, Alex is here to provide any feedback and to any, to answer any questions that you may have. But again, we, the main reason for being here this evening is being a town-owned golf course. That we do not want to raise the fees for residents without the approval of the council for something like this.
I I have a question. Because I don't golf, and I did look at the the increased rates, and I know golfing is a very enjoyable but very expensive sport. How do we compare on the rate increase with other local publicly owned golf courses? How do the rate increases compare?
Alex, would you be able to take that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I can I can jump on that. So even with the proposed rate increase, we would still be. For residents, the most economical in in market. Looking around, looking around our competitive set of Keeney Park, Goodwin, Stanley, some other that are public and also municipality driven. Their their max fees. At this point in time, for calendar, for calendar year twenty twenty five, they haven't released twenty six yet. They're at. If you'd look at it from an average of sixty dollar price point. So for residents with cart. So that would. Put us again in a in a pretty. At a lower. End of the competitive set in the market, excuse me.
Okay.
And and if I may add to that as well. Toting our own, tooting our own horn over here. It is very difficult to compare the Wittenberry Hills Golf Course to other golf courses in there. Wittenberry Hills Golf Course is a top forty public golf course in in the country. We that is pride that is going through. Golf Pass, which is all put out there by users. So it's a Pete Dye design that we're fortunate to have. And it's it's one of a kind and is a hidden gem, and it's the only public golf course in New England to be on that top fifty list.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Okay.
Sorry, I went to use the restroom. How it does about that?
Understood. If I, if I actually just not prolong the conversation over here, but one of the other things I'd like to say is we do. We really do hit our non-residents. I don't want to say we hit them hard, but we we max it out the best that we possibly can. What we do for the non-residents is we use a program called Dynamic Pricing, so that we understand the. The 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 value of the tee time that's coming in here, so that the time that they're getting in there at a peak hour on a Saturday or Sunday morning. For a non-resident is not going to be the same as it is on a Monday afternoon, when you may not have too many golfers out there. So we've been fortunate that we are able to do that for the for the non, for non-residents that come in, and we still have quite a few users. We average over thirty thousand rounds a year.
So I I just want to comment. You know, I did go to the golf club last week for our former councilman's memorial service. And very, very impressive. And coming here, when we knew this was going to be on the docket. Of course, there was a lot of conversation about. The outside and enclosing, but I know we already talked about that some time ago, that it's too expensive, but just to kind of keep. Keep it in your mindset, um it would be a wonderful addition to our community, just, just saying. But uh I I do think, uh I don't golf unfortunately, but I think if we are at the lower end of that scale, then we certainly. Are available to make some changes, you know, so we can, we can better serve, you know, our our community. So I'm I'm definitely uh, you know, in favor of 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 these changes. They're modest, you know.
And they, they are, and um they're really with the lifespan, where we're at right now in the, over the twenty years. Capital projects are are um they're right at on their doorstep as it spans right now, so we are looking for bunker renovation. We have some bridge repairs that we need to do, um car path repair. Um the the bunker repairs themselves are uh several hundred thousand dollars in order to do. Um we're getting close to the the end of the life cycle of the irrigation system that is a two million plus uh dollar. Um project, so all of these fees. I- i- any revenue that we can receive, it takes it so that we do not need to come back to the town, to the municipality to request funding for it. Now, do I, can I, can I promise that that's not going to be in the future if something catastrophic were to happen? No, oh but that is ultimately what our goal is. User fees to support the golf course.
Well, this is an extra thirty-five thousand dollars based on the five thousand dollars, the five thousand resident and current residents that utilize it. Is that what I just read or something?
I think we valued it at twenty-five thousand dollars. Yeah, which is substantial. Um that's um the golf carts, the golf paths, um we budget right around forty thousand dollars a year for that. So that's almost half the golf go- golf with cart um repairs um to the paths.
So.
So every little bit helps.
Will you be able to take out debt alone, or do you have to come to the town to take out debt? So you can't go to a bank and get funding for?
No, we're not, we are not looking for, we are not looking for that at this point in time. Um so if that comes in the f- in the future.
No, I'm asking like, do you come for the infrastructure in the future? Do you come to the town, or can you go out and borrow? From a bank or a financial institution to do the construction, or you have to come to the town? I'm just trying to figure out.
So, so if it was a major, if it was a major capital improvement and we needed town uh funding for it, we would go through the town with it. And then that would ultimately be through the capital improvement process, whether it be a referendum that would come up, just like any other town project, since everything is owned and operated there. Um we follow the same procurement process that we do with any other uh, any other department here in the town. So when they, when they do major purchases, like for example, they just purchased a a mower last year for um for right around fifty thousand dollars. Um we went out for three quotes for that, and then we issue, issue a purchase order through the finance department. Gets paid and then we come in and close it out.
Okay, I I support this because it's been almost sixteen years, uh fifteen since you increased it. Which is really, really reasonable compared to what golf rates are around uh for, you know, other areas in the, in the country. Uh so I fully support this. Um I've heard from members of the golf committee who fully support it. I just wanted to know where the, you know, what you would be doing with the extra twenty-five thousand dollar revenue. Is it strictly for, you know, uh maintenance? Is it for, you know, a perc- a particular project, or is it just to go into the general operating budget to cover salaries, et cetera? That's all I was asking for.
Understood.
Or were you using the extra twenty-five thousand dollars, the twenty-five thousand dollars as a revenue for a bond or like. Towards a loan to pay lockdown loans for infrastructure? So that's why I was asking, but.
So we, at this point in time, we believe that we have enough money um to move forward with projects without. Asking the town for funding for it, or without uh going out for bonding as well. Um so the the golf course has done well. Um so last year, you know, our, our average. EBITDA was just over four hundred thousand dollars. A year.
Well, thank you so much. Is there a motion to send this to council? Captain May, second by the mayor, all those, any discussion? We just had it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so this will be on the next town council meeting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh the discussion, next item for discussion is a possible discussion action related to the. Uh small business development fund. John, do you want to take this, or is Denise on to talk about this? Who wants to take this?
Is it, if this is the um, the Elevate Bloomfield Project, um. We have, we have a signed contract with a vendor. Uh we will be meeting with them within the next week. Uh to go over the um, to go over their wo- their work assignments and uh schedule. Um I can re- um I think the um, the clarification that's needed is that um. This is um.
Hard money versus soft money?
That the uh project is um, that the uh vendor contract is for all soft money. There is no hard money in the contract to provide direct grants uh or uh loans uh to small businesses. Uh it's all um data gathering and preparation of um procedures and policies. And um that, that's uh an outreach. Uh that's what um the contract calls for as presently approved.
And so Darryl, the question is, how do we get extra funding towards this for hard costs for uh microloans and grants? Um for this program. I know the, the, the um, uh I know the, the. The town charter talks about. We have up to section three ten requires a. Uh a referendum for non-budgeted appropriation, if it's in excess of one and one-half percent. And so that means if we have a hundred and seventeen million dollar budget, anything that we, that's unbudgeted or unappropriated under one point seven five. That means we would have to go to a referendum. So in this case, if we wanted to deploy some additional funding for this program. Um because we need some hard costs to do micro grants and loans to Bloomfield-based small businesses who've been. Uh in different shopping plaza or operating in Bloomfield, how would we go about that, Director Hill?
Um uh yes, you're right in your uh charter reference. Uh only council can appropriate. Um we have uh grants that we could pursue. Um and as we approach the fourth quarter of this year, which would allow for. The consultants that are, have been engaged and meeting with uh in the near term. Um once this is the second month of the year, fourth quarter is seven months away, so it gives them six, seven months to do some work. Um and then we could see if there's any funding available during the fourth quarter of this year. Uh or we'll, we'll be in uh budget development uh for next year. I don't, I don't know if the question is being asked for funding to be identified now. That would be used at some point months or a year from now. Uh but I think the timing of when that funding is available should dovetail well with when the consultants are approaching the end of their work and have. Uh clear recommendations and identified uh uses for funding, not only what to use it for, but how much uh is just as important.
Question. Uh is, is this in any way in alignment with our previous. Effort to submit the C I F?
Yes.
Yes, actually, can I, excuse me, good evening, uh Denise from Goman New York. I sent over you today, um Councilman Clary, and John, the program that we had done with C V S, C V S, sorry. C I F a number of years ago, um three now, I guess it is. Um in that, it had the marketing outreach, the educational program, and then it had startup grants. And loan funding that was called out in that. It was a considerably higher ask at that time, because it was a C I F ask. The whole program was about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So um looking at what the um. The current group is going to be working on, um if we could ask them to expedite. That grant and loan program, and then institute the educational pieces, you might be able to um. You know, tighten up that timeline a little, and maybe ask them to do that over three months. So that then you can start, um you know, it'll be about six months into your fiscal year. So that you could start um giving some of those grants away. If you were to appropriate the money.
Thank you.
Questions, any additional questions?
No, sir.
I thought my understanding was that there was a small business in town that needed support. And that we were asking for this so that we can support, we were asking to appropriate some soft dollars. To it in the given amount of, I don't know what that number was, but appropriate additional funding to help support that's small business. And that's why this was on the agenda. So are we saying that we're not appropriating until six to seven months, or? Are we saying let the con- let that consultant do the work in a holistic. Fashion, and then that small business will be taken care of because the idea would be identified in that process?
I think you could combine the two, Ken. Um to be honest with you, I think you can work with. The, the way the program is outlined that you have moving forward is in line with the. Town of Bloomfield Small Business Equity Fund that we had drawn up for C I F. Um and you know, you worked on that with us. So um. I think they could use that as a basis, because that's essentially what the town was looking for with the C I F grant. Um move forward with that. Um once you have that fund, how it's going to work set up. Then you can add the educational pieces into it, working with your small businesses, working on specialized programs for, you know. Financial stability, um I T, whatever, you know, they choose to go into the programs. I think they can run simultaneously. So that you would be able to give some grants to those small businesses that need it within, you know, a shorter timeframe. Because otherwise, if we're looking at it the way it is now, if we're going to let them set up the fund, it's going to take up to a year to do. You're not essentially helping any businesses, you know, for twelve to eighteen months out.
No. Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so no action. We'll put this back on for, I guess, next month to get an update. If we, city, you have a question?
No, no, I'm ready. No, thank you.
Okay, and maybe we'll get an update on after John. I don't know if that John, that update with the, the consultant is at the la- uh the. Governance Committee, or they need to come here. Uh but hopefully we can just keep track of that. Um next item on the agenda is the discussion regarding the increase in commercial building fees. Um I talked about this and put this on the agenda because I know we have the inclusionary zoning um um policy. Um and includes a commercially, commercial linkage fee, and in that policy, T P Z outlined. That a percentage of the, the, the commercial linkage fee will come from the um. From the building fees into the Housing Trust Fund, and I know Darryl has some assumptions in the budget for the commercial. Um building permit fees um in the budget, and so with that new policy on board. I put this on to make sure that the numbers that we have budgeted in our budget is not impacted by any new development. That is going to be impacted by the T P Z policy on the inclusionary housing. Because if a percentage of those fees need to go into the Housing Trust Fund, if we don't have that baked in into our current budget. We would have to gross up that building permit fee to cover that so that the town's budget is not impacted. And so that's why I put this on here for John and Darryl to have the discussion, or Dwight to have the discussion to make sure that that's not impacted. Make sense?
Well, the, the fee is, the way it's structured in the zoning regulations. It, the ten percent uh is not an add-on, it's an, it's a, it's a subtraction out of. The collection of fees collected for uh commercial buildings and uh new commercial, basically non-residential development. And so that um, you know, the, 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 there will not be an increase in the fee itself. But ten percent of the fees collected uh would be directed towards the uh, towards the trust fund. Before that can be done, um and I'm sure Darryl, the council would have to, the council itself would have to adopt an ordinance. So directing. Uh the, the zoning regulations themselves cannot direct how funding is um. Is uh guided within uh, within the uh, within the financial structure of the town.
Well, we did it in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so we already, in that ordinance, I think we already directed that it's a commercial linkage fee or whatever it's called, the impact fee. And that policy, and so if you're saying that it's ten percent, if Darryl has five hundred thousand dollars. Budgeted, and I'm just throwing these numbers, I don't know what the number is because I didn't look at it, but hypothetically, if Darryl has five hundred thousand dollars for building permit fees. And his, and his budget, and then ten percent of that has to go to, that's because that's collected, has to go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's fifty thousand dollars. Darryl would only get four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The Housing Trust Fund would get fifty thousand dollars. Darryl had fifty thousand dollars budgeted in the budget for building permit fees. He would be under, and that would be a problem, and so that's why I put this on the agenda.
I will defer to the uh, to Darryl.
Yeah, so we have one point three million in the fiscal two thousand twenty-six budget. And actually, uh as June's report is uh next on the agenda. Uh last year, we collected unaudited uh one point two eight eight million, ninety-nine point one percent of the budget.
But that, that wasn't um, some of that is residential. And that wouldn't be included.
Yeah, I don't have the split. I just have one line item for building demolition permits.
Yeah, we'd have to give you the split.
I mean, so I think there's a variety of ways the council could go about achieving the objective. Um we could increase the fee by some number or amount or percentage. Um and then have the ten percent apply. Um or could establish a threshold for the revenue generated. And if it's crossed, any amount above that threshold could go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and, and any variety of other uh, you know, creative options. But the, with a clear understanding of what council's objective is, we could develop some options. Uh to consider uh so that it's not. Uh burdensome for the user or uh uh negative for the budget overall.
Oh, can we have that in the September meeting of finance? I'm off from today.
Sure.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we're not, the budget is not impacted.
I'm sorry, Councilman Clary, did you say you're adding that to the next week's agenda?
No, September, the September regular schedule meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Darryl. Thanks, John. Next item on the agenda, Darryl, I'm turning it over to you for the June twenty twenty-five financials. This is the close-in, right? The closeout of that last year's budget?
Uh yes, this is the charter required. Within sixty days of the end of the fiscal year, financial report for all of fiscal two thousand twenty-five. Which uh should be obvious to all, as it is as of the end of June two thousand twenty-five. Um so it's as of the uh, the last day of the fiscal year. Uh of course, these numbers are unaudited. Uh the report uh was provided uh with the council package. Hopefully folks have had a chance to review it. Um I do believe it is positive. Um our total revenues uh exceeded the adopted budget by three point four percent. Uh tax collections uh were higher uh at just under one percent above budget. Our investment income, as uh we, we like to look at that one, uh was more than twice as much as budgeted, two point three million dollars. Of in- investment income. Um we just spoke to, or I spoke to the next uh line, which is the building demolition permits. Coming in at just under one point three million or just over ninety-nine percent of the uh fiscal two thousand twenty-five budget. With the real estate conveyance coming in at six hundred and eighty-four thousand or one hundred and. With the real estate conveyance coming in at six hundred and eighty four thousand or one hundred and fourteen percent of budget. These revenues all collectively, we exceeded the adopted fiscal two thousand twenty five budget revenue. By approximately three point seven million dollars. So that's on the revenue side. On the expenditure side. Expenditures as of June thirty in Munis are at ninety point seven percent. And you'll notice the parenthetical in the memo that excludes encumbrances. Right? So as we. Flip to the second page and see that when we include our encumbrances. We're projecting a slight favorable variance on the expenditure side, just under a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. And I'm sure everyone remembers the fourth quarter transfers and the additional appropriation that was requested and thankfully approved. Which provide us with what I believe to be appropriate breathing room, given the prior. And still growing use of Munis. I talk about Munis because it is our system of record, it is our source of truth, and if information is not in Munis, then in my mind, it does not exist. So while we developed the projection for the fourth quarter transfers and these numbers are unaudited. I'm hopeful that as we complete the twenty four audit and move on to the twenty five audit. That we will continue to maintain this positive variance. And to to wrap it all up for folks before I get into the fund balance portion, which is the last paragraph. That three point seven million positive revenue and a hundred and ninety five thousand. A hundred and eighty five thousand of positive expenditure variance would have us adding four million dollars to our fund balance. The current information, which is in the, again, in the next paragraph. Is that fiscal two thousand twenty five would add. An estimated three point five million dollars to our fund balance. So it's good performance, a greater confidence in our system of record. Which has continued into two thousand and twenty six. See that, a little bit of that in just a moment when I move on to the July report. But I know there's a lot of numbers and I I tried to lay it out, this next to last paragraph in the June memo. That talks about the unassigned fund balance. Tried to walk through year by year. Starting with what we know is audited, the fiscal two thousand twenty three fund balance, which sits at eighteen point eight percent. Or nineteen point six million dollars. It adds to that the conservative projection for fiscal two thousand twenty four performance. Just over one point five million dollars, which would bring us up to twenty point six percent. And then in two thousand twenty five, the three point five million that I I just spoke to. Would bring us to twenty three percent or twenty four points, just under twenty four point seven million dollars. And then we have the fiscal two thousand twenty six uses. We have three point seven five million in the operating budget and the four million dollar transfer. From the unassigned fund balance to the committed fund balance for the benefit of the Economic Development Trust. So our operating budget sits at that hundred and thirteen million. And after those uses, which let's remember my my prior remarks on whatever that agenda item was. Oh, the audits. Numbers are unaudited. Our year-over-year financial performance has demonstrated that we. The council in its annual appropriation has kept the mill rate lower by utilizing unassigned fund balance. That then our revenue generation primarily has overperformed and allowed us not to use that fund balance. So as we look at fiscal two thousand twenty six's estimated or projected fund balance, it's. It's actually hard to get to a percentage because I'm hopeful folks are familiar enough with the policy to know that. The revenue com- revenue. The, yes, the general fund revenues are. The denominator for the calculation. And it's the coming year, next year's revenues. We don't know next year's revenues and expenditures. We won't know that until we get through the budget cycle. So that fifteen point seven percent is utilizing the fiscal two thousand and six. Estimated budget or but adopted budget. Of the nuance in the policy of a hundred and seven million. So it it leaves us within our policy of fifteen to twenty percent. But as I walk through from the audited number in fiscal twenty three to twenty four, twenty five and twenty six. Twenty four, twenty five and twenty six, of course, are going to have movement until they're audited. At that point, we will update and specifically with regard to fiscal twenty four. And the conservative approach to show only one point five million of operating surplus from fiscal two thousand and twenty four. I think if you look back at, you know, when I first started, the. Report that was distributed to council, actually the same one for the the full fiscal year of two thousand twenty four. I think it was suggesting that there was three or four million dollars of surplus. As we've worked through the audit and, you know, we're not done yet, the questions are really on the revenue side. With some of the appropriations that council made and the question of whether or not those revenues. Are part of the operating budget and should fall to the bottom line. We know that the fiscal two thousand twenty four budget included. A hundred and ninety five thousand of unassigned fund balance for operations. But I believe what there were other uses for fund balance for capital projects and things like that. That are outside of the operating budget and in the capital budget. Hence, my conservative approach to show the one point five million. If it is anything. Other than that, given where we are with fiscal two thousand twenty four, I would expect it to be higher than one point five million. Now, whether it's two or two and a half or three, or something north of that, we'll see in the coming weeks. But I do believe that this is a conservative presentation of our current fiscal twenty three. Fund balance, which is audited and the projected up until today. And, you know, with greater confidence as I approach a year as the town's director of finance. The month-to-month reports and increased usage and proper utilization of our. System of Record Munis will allow us to not only generate the information more efficiently. But have greater confidence in what it is that it's presenting and that there's not. Significant items on particularly on the expenditure side, but also on the revenue side that aren't in Munis. We are becoming closer and closer to. My directive of standard to have information entered in Munis within forty eight, seventy eight hours, seventy two hours of a transaction occurring. So po- positive information with regard to the use of Munis and fiscal two thousand and twenty five's operations.
Great question. Yes, quick question around fund balance. For a fiscal year twenty twenty four. What is the actual number? Is it twenty four million? Thirty two thousand four seventy four?
No.
What is it?
So the. I'll I'll take a step back. The the audited fiscal twenty three number is nineteen million, six hundred twelve dollars. Six hundred twelve thousand forty dollars. Nineteen six one two zero four zero. That is eighteen point eight percent. And then the conservative two thousand and twenty four surplus of one point five million. One point five four four million brings us up to. Twenty one point, I'm sorry, twenty one million, one hundred fifty six thousand, two hundred and eighty three dollars. That's twenty point six percent.
Wait, so what happened in twenty twenty three when we had a fund balance of nineteen? And you add the extra one point five million, that should get you to, or we use a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. Did we use more than a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars from the assigned fund balance to balance the stabilization of the mill rate in twenty four?
In fiscal twenty four, there was a hundred and ninety five thousand of unassigned fund balance appropriated. But with our current. Our current surplus of one point five million, that one hundred and ninety five thousand was not used. So we don't subtract that from the nineteen point six million. It stays there. So the ending balance for twenty three is unchanged by twenty four operations. Because the hundred and ninety five thousand of appropriated unassigned fund balance isn't used, so we just add. To the fiscal two thousand twenty three. Fun ball, unassigned fun balance of nineteen point six one two million, the one point five four four million of projected surplus for twenty four.
But I thought we had, unless it decreased, I thought we had a variance of four point six one five. I'm looking at my previous finance charts from previous year. Meetings.
Yes, I think I I just referred to that when I spoke to starting roughly a year ago. And that that report that was provided before I started did reflect a surplus of three and a half or four and a half million dollars. Now, we know that. From my reports to committee. There was a significant amount of work that wasn't done, but primarily in Munis in two thousand and twenty four. So I've always been reluctant to show that number because I don't know how that number's been arrived at. With roughly half of the work that should have been done in fiscal twenty four not being done. So all of my comments about the fiscal two thousand and twenty four surplus being conservative. Is bringing that, whatever the prior number was, three and a half, four and a half million, down to one and a half million. And if that number of one and a half million isn't good, I believe it to be conservative that that number will go higher. I know I know I'm repeating myself for things I said a few minutes ago, but I.
Yeah, I know, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to get clarity, Darryl. I'm not meaning to have you. Clarify yourself, to repeat yourself, but I'm just trying to understand why we. Where, like, that's a delta of three, almost three million dollars. What was the drivers of us not having that variance of four point six million when we, I think we did this back in like. April, May, when I got these numbers and I know a lot changed. And a lot does change because it's fluid. I'm just trying to get a better understanding. Because we projected, I think the, we projected having. You know, as close as possible, that four, that four point six five plus the additional one point four million dollars. To roll over to kind of have like a twenty four point two one percent fund balance. Top total in twenty five million. And then we used in twenty five, two point seven five million. And then we had a variance of three point seven five million at the time. Which would have made us end the fiscal year, end of the year fiscal year twenty five with twenty six million. We use three point seven five in this budget year, and then we you put four million Economic Development Trust. To give us a roughly around eighteen point six eight four two seven, which would get us at sixteen point five percent of fund balance. Not fifteen point four. I'm just concerned that we're really, really etching on that fifteen percent level. And I'm trying to get a understanding based on the numbers that you sent us. During budget season, what was the major drivers of this significant change? I'm just trying to figure out what.
I I I hear you, Councilor. I I think I've said it a variety of different ways. I'll say it this way this time. The the changes in fiscal two thousand twenty four. Right? And as I've reported out to committee for the past year. Well, nine months in fairness, the first few months was trying to figure out what was going on. And I'm looking at my, I believe, first report to committee. For June of fiscal twenty four. That is information out of Munis that suggested that there was an eight point seven million dollar surplus. Now, there's no need for anybody to write that down because if you've listened to or watched the Finance Committee meetings. Month after month, I've reported that half of the work that should have been done in fiscal twenty four wasn't done. Which is a different way of saying you can't trust those numbers. The work hasn't been done yet. The work is done now. Now with the work done and until we get through the audit. I am comfortable saying one point five million is going to come out of fiscal twenty four. And there is the potential for that to be two or two and a half or three. Right? But I do not want to, with where we are now in the fiscal twenty four audit. To suggest that there's a eight point seven million dollar surplus. Because the information with the work that should have been done during twenty four being completed. Some of the work that was done during twenty four needing to be corrected. Right? This is where we sit. Conservatively. Right? And we are within policy at fifteen point seven percent projection. Now, in the weeks and month or two, we will have fiscal twenty four audited. And we'll know what that number is. And I I think the conservative approach is going to end up being something positive. Some, meaning something higher than one point five million. And then we'll recalculate where the fund balance will be and it'll be higher than fifteen point seven percent.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Darryl.
I'll say two or three words about July, which is the first period of the month, I mean, first period of the year. And, you know, one month into a twelve month period, there's 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 not much information to really share, you know, the report was provided. When the packet went out, the July revenue collections are solid at fifty two point one percent. Our tax collection, I'm sorry, it's total revenue at fifty two point one percent, which is normal with our July collections. Tax collections for the current levy where it's fifty six point seven percent, which is almost ten, eleven, twelve percent higher than the prior year. Our building demolitions are sitting at one ninety five for the first month of the year. One thing of note, both here and when I get to the expenditures. You may recall the July report for fiscal two thousand twenty five, you'll see this is up from last year at seventy two hundred. That's an example of the Munis issue. The revenues were in, they just weren't in the system yet. Right? So it looks really dramatic to have a hundred and ninety five thousand. In the system now versus seventy two hundred last year, right? That that's. The town administration getting better at its financial affairs or accounting for its financial affairs. Next line revenue, I'm sorry, real estate conveyance sitting at sixty five thousand, just under eleven percent of the adopted budget. I heard today, yesterday, that there's actually some more good news coming for real estate conveyance in August. Will likely be approaching. About half of the budget in the second period of the month, but we'll wait for for that to. Get in the system for next month's Finance Committee report. And the last thing I'll say about the first period of fiscal two thousand twenty six is our expenditures are at six point three percent. Excluding encumbrances, right? And then the next is nineteen point three percent, including encumbrances, right? That's the second example of Munis usage, right? We closed fiscal twenty five, we opened fiscal twenty six, and then across the town. Everybody started entering their purchase orders, which is what should normally happen so that. Our hundred and thirteen million dollar operating budget, we start earlier in the year seeing how much of it is encumbered. So when we go from month to month through fiscal twenty six, we'll have a better sense of. What's been committed and what's uncommitted just by pulling information out of Munis. Not having to do anything in spreadsheets or, you know, add things after the information is pulled out of Munis. So I'm I'm really encouraged by that, but we'll stop there because I see we're at two hours and fifty minutes.
Yep, no prob- I have no questions related to that. It's early in the month. I I I mean, in a budget year, not much to talk about. We did have a big sale. Of a real estate property in town and that two seventy one is going to be really good to that real estate conveyance, so. Good news. I wish I could take and put it towards the small business, but. Can't do that. But the next thing on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone? Steering up, hand is raised. India, I don't know.
Could I go ahead now?
Yeah.
Alright, good evening, Rickford Curtain, Seven Hickory Lane. So in reviewing the six thirty twenty five financials and fund balance calculation. This August report for June thirtieth financials. Show unassigned fund balance for six thirty twenty four was reduced by four point three million. From the twenty five point four to now the twenty one point one, a major reduction of four point three million. Why are we learning about this now? That was my first question. Your previous financial reports also reported a twenty five point four million for over. Your previous financial reports also reported a twenty five point four million for over six months. As well as for the twenty twenty five, twenty six budget deliberation. You also included that the balance as recently as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five council meeting, that the major variance yet, you have provided no explanation for the decrease. Other than a bunch of percent changes, we need to know in dollars what has changed and why. This, as you know, has uh an impact on both the six thirty twenty five and the six thirty twenty six fund balance. The town still has no audit. So why did you change it for this report? That's another question. Would the town council have drawn down seven point seven five million in the twenty twenty five, twenty six knowing this? Probably not. I just want to highlight some incorrect dates. Your beginning and ending dates for the estimated fund balance are incorrect for June thirtieth, twenty twenty five financials. The estimated unassigned fund balance should be June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, not June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. So for the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year fiscal period, your estimated end of the year should be six thirty twenty twenty five. The error is significant when trying to understand the beginning balance for six thirty twenty six fund balance calculation. The six thirty twenty six financials currently fiscal year fund balance, the calculation for six thirty twenty six fund balance has a beginning fund balance for six thirty twenty five of twenty four point six million. However, your revised six thirty twenty five fund balance is sixteen point nine million. What number is it? How did you arrive at that number? Another question is, what is all of this doing to our fund balance percent? The adopted budget is correctly reported at one hundred and thirteen million, not a hundred and seventeen. When you factor this in with no audit for the six thirty one twenty four combined with these major variances, we should be very concerned. And uh you know, I've listened to a lot of these meetings. And I've heard from the finance director and about support and everything, but to be honest, just from looking in from the outside, I I'm very concerned with the flux with the back
Thank you so much.
Can I just wrap up, please?
Just thirty seconds, please?
Yes. I'm I'm just concerned that we don't have any faith and I keep hearing uh Mr. Hill saying that I guarantee the number is going to be this or it could be higher. Those are, those are, let me finish, please. The comment, those are assumptions. And we can clearly see of everything I just outlined tonight, things are all over the place with the fund balance. So I think they need to be some clarification on what's going on with our numbers.
Thank you.
Counselor, if I may?
Thank you. Uh yes, you feel free to or do what you feel you need to do to clarify the record for the public.
So I know that's public comment and there's a lot of comments made there and uh apologize to the council for uh my outburst, but take it very seriously when somebody attempts to uh put words in my mouth and suggest that a career finance professional is guaranteeing, I I'd never said guarantee. There is no guarantee in the financial world. Right? The questions about the fund balance were just discussed ad nauseam, specifically about fiscal twenty four. Uh if the resident doesn't understand that, I'm happy to sit with them and walk them through how it works. Uh it seems like there's a lack of understanding about how the report changes when we cross over a fiscal year. And it's projecting uh forward when we don't know next year's budget. Hence the change in the dating scheme showing at the bottom right of the revenues and expenditures page. Um. You know, other other than that, the the I'll stop there.
Uh I have a question for you, Mr. Hill. Can you articulate the uh decrease in fund balance? Can you articulate why again? Just for the public record, because I think I asked that question that he asked before he asked the question. And you articulated it to me because I had the same question because I was looking at the finances too and I've been tracking it. Uh and so if you articulate it again for the public, I think it would be helpful.
So at the time of my predecessors distributing the June thirty two thousand twenty four uh unaudited report, and then two or three months later, my presenting the same information based on what was in munis. Uh I believe I referenced it when I pulled the the June thirty two thousand twenty four uh report. It was suggesting in in a surplus in excess of eight million dollars. Right? I think the revenues were four plus million over and the expenditures were four plus million under. Um you know, those numbers, I had no faith in. I've said it month after month. The information is not in munis. And for someone to think that information that was lacking half of the fiscal year's work to be accurate, I don't know how it was generated. Right? I presented it. I held it constant until I had better information. When I had better information that I believed is reliable, I updated it. And that was done, I believe, over the last two or three months, including today's reports. And if you read the report, I think one of the last things I say in each of them is, it is noteworthy that these numbers are unaudited and will change. Right? That's the way the audit works. Until fiscal two thousand and twenty four's audit is complete, we do not know what the fund balance will be. All of these are projections and estimates, whether it was the eight million from a year ago or what I'm currently projecting is one point five million conservatively. I believe that to be fair and accurate. We can look through the financial reports um that again, June thirty two thousand twenty five is presented today. Right? But we're talking about the decrease in an assumption for the fiscal two thousand twenty four ending fund balance that was made at a time when half the work hadn't been entered into our system of record. Now it has been and we're still working it, which is why I have such a conservative estimate. I'm hopeful that when I come back next month, I'll be able to demonstrate that the fiscal two thousand and twenty four surplus is something higher than one point five million. And then I'll answer those questions about why it's higher. And I'm happy to have, you know, work sessions or whatever to further folks' understanding about the way governmental finance works. Because it's really challenging to hear comments made by anyone that are not accurate. Right? Because I I welcome folks' opinions. Right? But you gotta be prepared. Right? You you have to do your homework before you want to particularly jump out in the public space saying things that are not accurate.
So if you could just break down uh just when you have time, I know you're focusing on the audit and everything and I don't want to pull you away.
Trying to focus on audit. There's a lot of other things that are competing, but yeah.
Not from directors of counselors, but
Um I apologize.
No, I'm just saying, because I
There's a day, there's a day job, right? I've got a four to O P M. I've got, I've got a long list of things that I have to do. And when I'm doing all of those things on the day job, I'm not working on the audit.
But I
Not even to prepare for this meeting, I'm not working on the audit. So yes, I'm trying to do my best.
I hear you, uh Director Hill, but it's important when we don't have an audit, right? To try to put as much information out there as possible, what supportive documentation outside of this. Um so that comments like you heard just before isn't made, right? Because we understand I'm not running for reelection. There are people who are running for reelection and they're gonna put buzzwords up there and it's up to the staff, not to get political, but it's up to the staff to put the facts out there so that people understand it as plainly and simple as possible. Uh and so if you could just
I agree with that, right? But the very first thing that anyone needs to understand is that until it's audited, they are not facts. They are estimated. They are going to change. And when they change, having a bunch of conversation about the change lacks the understanding that they're unaudited and are going to change. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about unaudited numbers. Right? Twenty four is gonna change, twenty five is gonna change, and we're only a month in the twenty six.
I hear that.
The coming weeks, we will have a twenty four number. And then you'll be projecting twenty five.
Perfect. I hear that, right? Uh I think the 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 citizen was referring to previous years when we have projections, we usually project very, very conservative. And when we see that number get close to that fifteen percent mark, we get a little nervous here in Booneville. I think we've had this discussion offline, right? That's how um Council of Merritt and others who are on the council were fiscal hawks. Well, he's not really a fiscal hawk because he likes to spend, but others who've been fiscal hawks. Uh and I love Council of Merritt, um have looked at where we would be projecting out with our fund balance. And anytime it gets close to the fifteen percent, and I think that resident was on the council at the time when the six point five percent tax increase happened because of the fund balance was low, they felt the need to uh increase taxes so that we didn't go that close to the fifteen percent of the fund balance. But that year, we were given misinformation because at the point um uh town manager Hawthorne was saying one thing and then two weeks later after his departure, the finance team at the time said something different. And then a year later, we came to find out that what uh former town manager Hawthorne projected was indeed the right number. And so uh I think he was just saying we're getting a little too close to that fund balance fifteen percent level and wanted to understand why. Um but is there any additional uh comments that are not addressing this, but anything that the committee has talked about tonight? I'm gonna open it up one more time to Council of, former Council of Curtain and let him get two minutes this time. Uh if somebody can take time, we can elevate him and give him two minutes. But we're gonna respect the staff.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna be brief. I'm just gonna say with all due respect, uh I I'm a finance guy as well. I'm an accountant. I've been on the council for six years, so I know what I'm talking about. And these numbers, the back and forth, the change from month to month, now we're at the council basically made a decision to take a large sum, over seven million from the fund balance. I can guarantee you if these projections that you provided, and there are projections correctly, their decisions might have been different, sir, with all due respect. So the information you provided to them provided them with the assumption that they had more than enough to move that into the budget and to put four million dollars into a trust fund. So all I'm saying, your assumption that you provided to council and their decision was based on your numbers. So please, I prefer not to be lectured. Thank you, um Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just say this. Um the information that was provided to council during FY uh two thousand twenty six budget development was the best available information at the time. It's a legacy issue. If the town's audits were current, the town would have had current information for budget season. That's what we're working to return to. Again, it's been four years. Four years without current information for the budget cycle. Right? The state statutory deadline of December thir- thirty first is intentional. Right? But we haven't had that since two thousand twenty, I believe, or is it twenty one? Alright, so the best available information is an estimate, is a projection until it's audited. And then we know what it is, like fiscal twenty three. And in the coming weeks or so, we'll have the twenty four number. And we'll know whether or not the prior projection of eight point seven million or the current at one point five or something in between will be more accurate. But until we have audited financials, what we're talking about are estimates and the best available information. You recall, I kept the fund balance information consistent for nine months. Because I didn't have confidence in changing it from what it was to anything else. Now I do. And it's based on all the work that's been done over the past year to get fiscal twenty four's work done, prepared for the audit. And again, in coming weeks, once the audit's done, we'll know what the twenty four number is and we'll be talking about what the twenty five projection is.
Thank you, uh uh Director Hill and thank you from your team for all the work. Um I do want to note that uh thanks to Council of Merritt. Um if we do, or the whoever is here um in the future uh finds that we want to reallocate those four million dollars from the Economic Development Trust Fund, we did put a provision in to protect our asset. It's a balance sheet issue. It's still in our fund balance, but it's an assigned fund balance to the Economic Development Trust. If we don't you shaking your head no? Mr. Director Hill? Right? Am I correct that it's still uh it's in the assigned fund balance and not the unassigned fund bu- but balance? But if we
You're on mute, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
It's the committed fund balance, not
Committed, assigned, committed, similar terminology, assigned, committed.
Very, very different. I believe the assigned is authorized for expenditure. The committed is not.
That's, that's true. Thanks for the correction.
So the Economic Development Trust has four million dollars that's been committed to it, but to spend it, it has to come back to council to authorize expenditures.
Yep, and if they want to remove it and put it back into the unassigned fund balance, they have the jurisdiction to do so, correct. So it's just a, as I was saying, during budget season to the former council is a balance sheet issue. It's still a part of the town's assets. And it doesn't affect, it didn't affect the overall budget uh because it was a balance sheet issue. So appreciate the comments. If there's no additional comments, is there approval of minutes? For July twenty first. Move, uh I moved to adoption. Is there a second? I think that conference room is on mute.
Dad, not even sure how we went like that. Um I'm not sure we have enough people to vote on on the minutes, Council of McCleary.
Oh, we don't. We don't have any, yeah.
Okay, alright. I didn't know, I didn't see the room. Okay, thank you. So we'll push these out, India, to next week. Alright, well adjourned. Thank you. No other business. Thank you, Director.
Wait, wait, I want to say thank you to Director Hill. Um I I I may not be an accountant, but I understand unaudited. And so I thank you because you have been very redundant in using that terminology. And this is just to reiterate so the public understands. Uh you never made a firm commitment. Unaudited, I think we all get that. And so I thank you for updating the numbers that you had. I thank you for addressing questions during the comment section. And I also want to give kudos to Council McCleary because as you speak to the return on investments, a lot of that is to the credit of Council McCleary and his hard work looking at our funds and how we're investing them. And I just give a lot of credit and kudos to him for the work he's done. And I wanted that on the record before we adjourn. I thank you both very much this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.